Alright, good afternoon. It's 1:13, I think it was supposed to start at 1 o'clock. Apologies for slight delay. I'm gonna read these words that Ms. Regala told me to read before I started going off script. They have a hard time when I go off script, and I go off script all the time. Isn't that right, Regala? "From the time of the award, it can take at least three months from the time of the allocation before organizations receive funding due to the extensive background check and contracting process of the Finance Division." We're not the Finance Division. If you have a problem with the Finance Division, you blame the seventh floor. See? You guys want to repeat? We got it, I only have to go through it. Now, if the check is not given to you in a timely manner, who do we blame? The seven... Alright, I'm not even gonna go through the whole spiel. Y'all already know it. "If you have any major events or projects coming up in the next three to four months, please prepare to make other arrangements to fund those things, just in case." Presenters will have two minutes unless the council members... Well, I guess Councilman Ford and I, and Councilman Walker and White, have more questions. You know, with that, you know, I don't wanna belabor the point, we can go ahead and get started. We have a lot of folks on the agenda to be heard today. And, you know, I may interrupt you from time to time, just to ask specifically about how much you're asking, what you're trying to do, particularly for the organizations that been here. If you're a new organization, I'm gonna let you talk a little longer, because I wanna know a little bit more about your organization. With that, the first organization up? Oh, we don't necessarily... Roll call vote, Ms. Regala? You know what to do.
Councilman Ford Senior, Councilwoman White.
President.
Councilwoman Walker.
President.
Chair Smiley.
I think I'm here, you know? Alright, Adult and Teen. Oh, you see, y'all are prepared. Eager. Can you sit here and then hit the mic button, do you see a green light? Let's get this presentation up. Alright, name, address, for the record, and then tell us about your organization.
Yeah, my name is Benjamin Jared. Director of Development for Adult and Teen Challenge. The address is 33 North Cleveland Street, Memphis, Tennessee, 38104. For those that don't know, Adult and Teen Challenge of Memphis has been in midtown Memphis for 50 years. We are a highly structured recovery support program. We are faith-based, and we serve adult men that struggle with life-controlling issues such as drug and alcohol addiction. Our mission statement, I'm gonna read a little bit of a shorter one. "Adult and Teen Challenge of Memphis empowers individuals facing addiction through transformative faith-based recovery support. We foster healing, hope, and lasting change for a purposeful future." A little bit about our organization. It's a one-year program, 12 months. We are nationally accredited with an 80% success rate from an independent survey. That success is continued sobriety after graduation of our program. We do have 60 beds on all of our campuses with a reentry program, which is the last four months of the program, which provides job and transitional functions back into society. We do have ongoing partnerships with leading Memphis organizations such as Church Health Center, Christ Community, the Memphis Food Bank, and over 30 local churches. We were founded in 1971. It's about 53 years ago. We are recognized as a 501(c)(3) since 97. We have not had any funding from the city of Memphis before. We serve an average of 82 individuals per year. Now, a lot of those individuals aren't from Memphis, so I'd say about 10% of those are Memphis residents. Our funding request is $56,000. What's that? That's supposed to sponsor 10 students to be able to come into the program that don't have any financial support. We do receive a lot of houseless individuals from the streets of Memphis. We work with 201 Poplar and other probation offices in Memphis to get men furloughed to our program. And it is not a free program, it's $700 a month. Tuition is what we expect upfront for the students to be able to participate. And so $5,600 would be for one student to enter our program without having to worry about financial support.
Any questions from the body? Councilwoman White?
Yes.
What, and you don't have to go in great detail, but just kinda just bullet point the programming.
Yeah, so we are a Christian program. The foundation of our program is to teach biblical foundation. So, the first eight months of the program is residential. The guys, they go through daily classes, Bible study. We do have a thrift store on the corner of Madison and Cleveland, if anyone's interested, called BAM, where the guys learn work detail, you know, they get work detail experience. A lot of these guys come from not having a job, not holding one down for a very long time, so they get to practice that with the community of Memphis. That's the majority of their day. We do go off-campus for a lot of church services, Wednesdays and Sundays guaranteed. We do chapel services Mondays and Fridays, so there's a lot of church, a lot of Bible, and a lot of community. The good thing, or I think the cool thing about our program is the staff members that work there are graduates of the program, and so they get to provide one-on-one advisements with these guys and help them cope with their traumas or whatever, things that are leading them to use drugs and alcohol. And so that's another foundational point of what makes our program successful.
Thank you.
Thank you for that response. I was having a conversation with Regala, one of my bosses, and she loves your program. She's very familiar with it. And I said, "Do you stand on this?" She said, "All ten toes," so, you know. I listen to her, so look forward to supporting your program. So I'm gonna support it at some level, hope some of the council members as well. What I encourage you to do is reach out to all of the council members consistently. I haven't made any allocations yet. I know some of the council members may or may not have, so send them email, sit in the back, don't leave too early, you may catch some councilman walking in and saying, "Hey", you know, "Just presented." But consistently, consistently reach out. But thank you all for the presentation. I think we have about a two-week window to get all the allocations in, and then at that, some point you'll be hearing from the council. So, thank you all. Oh, there was a young lady, I don't know where she went, came and whispering to me, there's something I didn't say. I'm supposed to say this. Conducting a presentation does not guarantee that your organization will receive funding. So, reach out to the council members, email them, call them. You know, you can sit out in the hallways, they gonna walk up. Hey, talk to them. I mean, they're elected to represent you, so they shouldn't be afraid to have a conversation with you. So, thank you all for coming, and I'm familiar with your program, and Regala loves you, so that means I gotta love you too. So I can get some work done.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. You loving two cats before? Alright, thank you all. Is Alpha House here? Alpha House, going once, going twice? It might be your friend, because I know they did apply. You may wanna call them. Because we're gonna skip them now. You may wanna send a text message. Always giving back Memphis. Is this the first time? Oh, you getting in the hot seat, I should've asked you all the questions.
I am so nervous. So I just wanna...
Sometimes I, you know, I make people nervous.
Yes.
It's not one of those days, though.
And the many others.
It's not one of those days.
Well, this is normally not my strong suit, I am...
You're here.
I am here, and I'm stepping in for my father. This is our nonprofit together, but this is normally his deal, I'm in the background. So, I was my best.
You're prepared, you're more than capable, let's go.
Alright, well, I wrote something, so I'm gonna do my best. You guys ready for me?
Absolutely, name and address for the record.
My name is Candy Williams, and the address is 7586 Alpine Gray Drive, Arlington, Tennessee. Do I go now, or...? Okay. Hello, everyone, I am thrilled to be here today, and I wanted to share a little bit about Always Giving Back. Can you guys hear me? And I want to share a little bit about Always Giving Back, a nonprofit that started with a simple idea and a little bit of nostalgia. You see, my father is retired military from the Navy, and he often reminisced about his give-back days on his last ship. And apparently, it was a lot of, it was a lot less like a cruise, minus the drinks and sunshine, but with plenty of heart. So, in 2008, I thought to myself, why not take this spirit and take part and create something meaningful? And that is exactly how Always Giving Back was born, from a desire to support our beautiful community. We started off by kicking things off with the blessing bags for our residents at Wesley Madison Towers. Thanks to some incredibly talented local artists who joined in with us over the years, we were able to discover some additional pressing needs that they had. It turns out that navigating finances can be trickier than assembling IKEA furniture without the instructions. So, we rolled up our sleeves and started offering financial literacy classes for both the residents and the artists, bridging generations and creating stronger ties within our community. Since then, we've sponsored 21 performing artists and provided 12 free financial education seminars, and we're just getting started. With this grant, we aim to expand our reach even further, helping people manage funds, save effectively, understand contracts, because, let's face it, we all know how confusing the fine print can be. Always Giving Back is small, but we are mighty, and we believe that even the smallest waves can create large ripples. So I invite you all to assist us in making those ripples spread across Memphis. Thank you for your time and support, and let's keep giving back together, and that's all that I have. I did provide you guys with the PowerPoint if you have any questions for me.
Any questions from the council members? He said, "You didn't ask us for no money."
We're definitely asking for money. So we're looking about, about $12,000 is the contribution that we are seeking from you guys.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, well, thank you. You still alive? You not bleeding?
I did die.
You're good, you're good.
Thank you so much for your time.
Oh, absolutely, thank you. Tell your father you did an amazing job.
Thank you so much.
Beyond Education Foundation. Oh, this I-N-G, you know? I don't know, I'm not gonna throw anyone under the bus, but what I'm reading...
Well, I gave you the correct one, young man.
Type of, you know, I'd say I did it. I'm gonna point at who did do it, it was me.
She wanted me to connect the presentation? Yes, please. Yes, please. So she told me to insert, and then you're gonna do something underneath? Okay. And then she said, "Just put the jump drive in."
Right here, right?
Yes.
The floor is yours. Name and address for the record.
Alright, good afternoon, my name is Kiana Cheers. We are located...
First time, I'm sorry, first-time applicants?
Well, no.
Last one before?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Our address is 2285 Frazier Boulevard, Memphis, Tennessee, 38127. We're also housed at 5097 Leonard Road, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. Ready? Okay. Today, we are presenting to the council, Beyond Educating Foundation. Our mission is to help overcome, help communities overcome issues, problems, and concerns that's facing the world. We do try to, because we are beyond educating, we do try to touch all avenues of the environment, human rights, economy, culture, current events, geography, scientific and technological advances and discoveries. It's part of our mission. We have been in every area of Memphis. We have various programs that we are implementing, developing a growth mindset. You all will see inside of your packet, gives you the list of everything that we have, that we've been working on, and we also provide you all with a visual on the one pager that's inside of your bag, and you can see the pictures, because I know some of us are visual learners, so you can scan the QR code to see the different pictures and everything that we've worked on since 2018. We obtained our 501(c)(3) status in 2019, and we have been hitting the pavement ever since then with the many programs that you see here. We are here to request for our upcoming program, which is Empower Memphis and King's Leadership and Fatherhood Program. We propose to serve more than 500 constituents who are directly or indirectly impacted by gun violence, poverty, and mental health challenges. Like I said, we've been doing this for a long time. We have touched over 20,000 citizens since 2018. Our capital that we've raised so far is 75,000, but for our program, it does take at least 1.3 million for our program to be implemented fully annually. We do have wraparound services with our partnership with Driving the Dream and other various partnerships throughout the city. We are trauma-informed social-emotional wellness development, conflict meditation, and conflict resolution. The public needs that will be addressed have been addressed and has continued to be addressed by Beyond Educating Foundation, is crime and drug prevention, youth empowerment, economic development, and poverty. This is our solutions that we're proposing to help improve the city of Memphis along with other nonprofits, along with other businesses throughout the city. We have various trainings, increased public awareness, collaboration with other local organizations, and to, our strategy is to ensure improvements with non-punitive approaches to help end violence, positive reinforcement to prevent conflict, and our monitoring and tracking data system that's guaranteed quality services. As you see here, this presentation is inside of your file folder that's inside of your reusable bag. So we are here to request $10,000 from the council members in each district or the districts that we serve is what we are requesting for today.
Councilwoman Walker?
Good afternoon, and thank you for coming. In your description, you mentioned environment, and that's something that always piques my interest. Can you just speak to that briefly, what that work is about?
Light cleanup. As you know, there's a lot of homes that's throughout the area that are, people just believing throwing trash there, the tires on the road, so we do help with the cleanup service. One of our organizations, Family Man Enterprise, and Family First, have a cleanup service that we do throughout the city.
Okay, thank you for that. I yield the floor.
Alright, any other council members in the queue?
I got one question.
Councilwoman White?
So the conflict resolution in some of the classes that you offer, are these ongoing, or they're, do you take in a certain number of students at a certain time, or is it ongoing? How does that work?
Yeah, it's definitely ongoing. Right now, Beyond Educating is teaming up with Family Man Enterprises. We do a Thursday night conflict resolution talk every night, and we've actually been supported by you before, so we appreciate it. I did a presentation a couple of years ago. But it's, it's ongoing, and so part of it is, we're working on young people and men's mindset, not leaving any ladies out, but we understand that if we can work on the young men and get them back to peak status, that things will work out. So we have documented Thursday night conferences, and then we do a once-a-month at our facility. We use Frazier Connect and other buildings around the Frazier area, as well as in Whitehaven.
Where do the students come from, and what age range do you serve?
So before you respond, name and address for the record.
Oh, Raymond Cheers, 5097 Leonard Road, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109.
Thank you, Mr. Cheers.
What was your question, what schools?
Well, what age group, and then where do the children come from?
So we kinda realize that conflict resolution is in all age. You can see them in toddlers, you can see it in youth, you can see it in older people, so our age range is usually between four, ages four to 99. Our partnership with Memphis Artists for Change that also does the conflict resolution, they also have the facility that's in the Whitehaven area that they service people over there in that area. We are waiting on the contract to come through with Memphis Shelby County School, with Grandview Heights Middle School, Egypt Elementary, and Keystone Elementary School. We've been in Germantown Elementary School before, we've talked to, in John P. Freeman Elementary School before, what is that, right there off of? The Home Throat area, and then we have another one that is a charter school that we service, because we did, Memphis Business Academy, yes.
Councilman Ford?
We do, we service.
Always, everybody, we gotta include the girls too, not just the boys no more.
We do not leave them out, but if those young men get a healthy mindset, then things can roll pretty good.
Yeah, because they need just as much help.
Yes, sir, but thank you for it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you all.
Thanks.
Same thing I said, to the last group, consistently reach out to the members, we haven't finished allocating yet. Some of us haven't started, because some of us like to procrastinate, me, so...
Well, that's good, we're gonna take advantage of that.
So be sure to reach out to the council members, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for the bag.
Yes, it's free. So do you want me to just exit? Just exit, okay.
Benjamin Hooks for Social Change. Alright, y'all prepared, name, address for the record, and then the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm Rory Trammell, and I'm Associate Director of the Benjamin Hooks Institute for Social Change.
I got white papers.
Yeah, and in that role, I'm also HME Director. And our address is on the University of Memphis campus, 3675 Alumni Ave., Memphis 38152.
Y'all, y'all do a lot of white papers.
We do, we do policy papers, very good, thank you.
I'm a nerd, sorry.
Good, good, and Zerk?
I'm familiar with your work. Go ahead.
And my name is Zurich McGee, I am a HME member, and I'm the immediate past president.
Well, the floor is yours, I'm familiar, and some of the other councils may not be.
Okay, so I'll share some information, and I'm gonna talk quickly, because I'd like to have most of our time being that you hear from our student. So we're the Benjamin Hooks Institute for Social Change, we're an interdisciplinary center as part of the University of Memphis. As an institute, our mission is teaching, studying, and promoting civil rights and social change, but we're here today to talk to you about our student success programs. We have two student success programs with the purpose of supporting undergraduate experience at the university, helping the students have a good collegiate experience, stay in school, and graduate. So we have two programs, one is the Hooks, could we go back one? One is the Hooks Academic Achievement and Mentoring Initiative that was started in 2015. Based on the successes and best practices of that program, we started another program in 2021 for the women, Councilman Ford, we did start a program for the women, and that's called "The Seat at the Table," based on the quote from Shirley Chisholm that says, "If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring up your own folding chair." So that program, we call ASAP. What we're requesting in our application is $12,500, the majority of which will have direct impact with our students, student educational expenses primarily books, helping them with their books. Community engagement experiences, we like to take the students out in the community to different amenities, let them see what the community has to offer, and we pay for that, usually about $30, sometimes we have food. We have academic enrichment sessions, really to cover academic achievement, personal development, and career readiness.
How does a student become a part of the program?
There's actually, there's no fee, all they have to do is fill out an application, be an undergraduate student at the U of M. They have to answer a lot of questions, about 40 questions, mainly because we have such a different, such a variety of funders, and different funders are interested in different things, and so we ask a lot of questions, of course, being Hooks Institute for Social Change.
Are they engaging in research?
No. Well, actually, sometimes, like, there's a research project going on now that a faculty member is doing, and on understanding different dialects and understanding documents, and so they don't participate in our research, but they do participate in research for some other faculty. Yeah, so our monthly enrichment sessions are any topics relating to those three focus areas, academic achievement, personal development, and career readiness. We have a big annual dinner in every November where the students get to meet with professionals in the community, they get to practice their networking skills that they have been trained on, introducing themselves, personal elevator speeches. And because HME is October, or fall of '25 will be our 10-year anniversary, we think we're doing a great job, but we want to have an external evaluation to see how we're going, how we did the last 10 years, and what we need to do going forward.
Are y'all engaged with Slingshot at all?
No, no. And the external evaluation is a university unit called the Center for Community Research and Engagement. Well, the university does, we'll be using their research, and that evaluation was gonna be about 13,000, so we're asking for support to help with that. These are, these are the program components that we have, kind of consolidating them into different groups, this is what we do. Personal financial literacy is in partnership with Truist Bank, they're one of our funders. Could we go next one?
Slingshot does it for free. I think they actually pay you to participate in their evaluation program.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm all about saving money.
Yeah, yeah. This is kind of the quick facts, we've had 250 students in our program since the inception. We average about 75 participants, usually in HME, we have about 50 participants. 80% of the programs, students do have financial need, we have some great academic success with Dean's List. HME, since the program started, we've had 69 graduates, and 17% graduate with honors. And just a quick snapshot of kind of where our graduates are now, I think that's the next slide. Oh no, these are kind of what are students. I have a student here, and he's gonna, you know, Zerk's gonna talk about his experience, but this is what some of our other students have said, and then I think the next slide is just kind of where our graduates are now. A lot of, the majority of our graduates do stay in Memphis, and they've had some success stories, but I want you, I know I've covered a lot, but I want you to hear from Zurich, who's been a beneficiary of the program.
Okay, I'm so sorry if I talk fast, I am a very speedy talker, but I would like to get right to the point. My name is Zurich McGee, I'm a history Spanish double major at the University of Memphis, I'm a senior. I've been at, well, I've been in this program since I was a freshman and joined the Student Leadership Council, which is the head portion of the Hooks Institute since I was a freshman. Genuinely, what this program has meant to me has been, you know, community work, literally due to the foundation of community work and education. It encouraged me to join my fraternity, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. I don't see any of my brothers here, but I love you all. I love you all. But, but other than that...
Fred Oss will be happy about that.
Again, we do use a lot of service opportunities, we work within our communities, we talk about history, and that's very important to me, especially since Memphis' history regarding the Civil Rights Movement, our Luther... And that's very important to me, especially since, uh, Memphis's history regarding the Civil Rights Movement, Martin Luther King Jr., uh, all these other things. And pretty much, I've always found it beneficial for my education, just social life in general. Uh, we have book stipends that have really helped me out, especially since I'm of financial need. Uh, and we also have other stipends as a reward for making sure that our education is on point. Be sure that, you know, we do our service events, be sure we go to other events, and stay within the community as well.
I'm, I'm good. I'm sold on the program, you know, I'm familiar with the organization. I didn't know y'all had a, a younger adult portion associated.
And I would, I would say again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Councilman Spinoza actually came and visited the Hooks Institute a couple of weeks ago, got to speak with some of our students, and so we appreciate, you know, that extra reach out. And on a personal note, glad to see my Memphis State classmate Pearl from back in the other name.
That's in the city of Memphis.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Penny. Uh, periods are all hard sometimes. Good, thank you all for, for being here. Thank you. Best of luck to you. Where you from, Memphis?
Not originally, but we've been over here for twenty years.
You've been here how long?
I've been here for, uh, ten, but my family's been here for twenty years.
Okay, stay here. Keep it down here. All right, okay. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Boys and Girls Club. I did not see y'all in the back. See, y'all were hiding from us. I think my feelings are hurt. Be ready, name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, I'm Gwendolyn Woods, uh, interim CEO of Boys and Girls Club of Greater Memphis, forty-fourth South Remembered. And this is Renee Fumis, our CFO.
Okay, cool. Go ahead. How long you been in the role?
Uh, I've been in a role about a month, but I've been with the organization nine years. I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
Okay, so you're not new?
No.
Congratulations, Ms. Woods.
Thank you.
True to this, gotcha. Floor is yours.
All right. Since nineteen sixty-two, Boys and Girls Club of Greater Memphis' mission has been to enable those who need us most to realize their full potential as caring, productive citizens. The services we provide align with those of the city councils relating to youth empowerment, crime, and drug prevention. Because we believe in our initiative, that they are effective, we are here today requesting funding for a new initiative to open two new middle school sites that will feed into our high school sites, allowing us to have an impact on kids at a younger age. The seamless transition would afford us six years to work with them. Statistics show that sixty-two percent of violent crimes happen after school. However, Boys and Girls Club offers a safe environment after school where kids can participate in engaging programs, character and leadership, healthy lifestyles, academic excellence, conflict resolution, and more. Doing so helps us develop a skill set of better decision-making that could reduce risky behaviors. What I love most about Boys and Girls Club of Greater Memphis, that we are consistent. We stick around long enough to see the seeds that we sow grow and the impact of the programs have. One hundred percent of our vice seniors graduate. Ninety-nine percent of the members feel safer in our club. Ninety-three percent state that they are, they can make the right decision even when other friends disagree. Over time, we heard impactful stories from members and alumni. We want, we know that our youth need support and resources outside of their homes. That's because we wanna be a part of that support system. I was once one of those kids in the inner city that needed additional guidance and support. Without it, I'm not sure I would be in front of you guys today. That's exactly what we wanna do for other youth in our city, to empower and equip them to be the vision of a better Memphis. It is our hope that great futures can start inside of our two new sites, and we hope that we have your support. Adieu to you. I see you.
So I'm gonna talk just a minute about our ASK. Um, it is, uh, a large number to start these two new sites. When you break it down, it's two dollars and eighty-seven cents per day. For each student that's served, we do run a twelve-month program. We're hoping to have six hundred additional students served through these two sites, and our total ASK is four hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-three cents, and that's the accountant in me. I have to be precise.
I'm gonna ask, ask, uh, Councilman Ford's question. He usually asks when we get a large, uh, request, he says, what do y'all get in from the county side? Did I get it right? There you go. All right.
We are actually still working on pulling all the funding together on this. Um, I know one of the other things y'all asked about is the percentage of budget. It's five point three percent of our FY twenty-four budget. Um, and looking at the thirteen school-based sites that we would have with these two additional sites, it's about fifteen point eight percent of the total thirteen school-based sites. We do have twenty sites, plus these two would make twenty-two. We absolutely are. We serve both boys and girls in the community.
I guess my, my, um, my next question is, what percentage of your budget do you receive from the administration? Because I know people ask the city of Memphis for funding, and then people also ask the city council for funding. The trick of it is, it still comes from the same pot. Did you receive any funding from the city of Memphis?
So our.
The administration, not the council.
So our city of Memphis funding was a, uh, grant to last over about four and a half years that we received in late two thousand and twenty-one, um, to open the initial, uh, ten new high school sites, and we're closing that out within the next twelve to fourteen months. We have not received any additional funding for these two new sites.
In this budget, how much do you have from the city? Is it two fifty, five hundred? What is it?
Um, if you're looking at the three point two million, uh, what we've got in that particular part of it would be about two, roughly two million.
Two million from the city?
Right.
Okay. But that's not this fiscal year, that's?
That's for the next fiscal year.
The next fiscal year.
That's, that's what will close out the grant for us.
What about this fiscal year?
Um, it's about the same. Uh, we got a total of nine million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-one that was allocated across several years.
I'm a little old, I forget. That's the gray hair I'm gonna go to. All right, um, that's it for me. Any other questions from the council members? All right, same thing. You know, a lot of council members send, send emails, consistently reach out, and, uh, I think you're here back most within the next few weeks. Thank you all.
We really do appreciate y'all listening to us.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt, no doubt. And, uh, good luck in that interim CEO role.
Thank you.
That's Regala keeping me good. Braille Box. I'm liking this though. Name and ad, name and address for the record. I know Councilwoman, uh, Swearingen Washington is inquisitive. She has a question.
Um, I'm Angela Hilson. Address, uh, for the Braille Box organization is eighteen forty Pyramid Place, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one three two. And, uh, with me is Dr. Nakisha Griffin.
Thirty-four twelve South Perkins, uh, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one eight.
Talk to us, tell us about your organization. Is this your first time asking us for money? Okay, you nervous?
A little bit.
Little bit. I've been pretty nice today.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm working on it.
Okay.
Regala told me I was mean this morning, so I'm working on it.
So far, so good.
Thank you.
Um, well, this, as you said, this is our first time presenting. Uh, we are a new nonprofit, started in two thousand and one, but mostly just grassroots efforts. Um, I'm a former, uh, visually limited teacher for, uh, Memphis and Shelby County Schools, uh, moved on to work for the state of Tennessee and noticed the need that exists, um, in braille literacy, not just for our PK twelve students, um, in the city, but also with seniors facing vision loss in the city, um, tackling things like glaucoma, um, macular degeneration, things that, that hit them at, at that age. Uh, Braille Box, the problem that we're trying to tackle is that many of our seniors over fifty-five, specifically with this funding, we really want to tackle this issue, seniors over fifty-five who are experiencing a loss of vision. There is a law that requires that, uh, the American Disabilities Act requires that signage be placed in public buildings. The problem is, most people who experience vision loss can't read Braille. And so that, that's a major problem. The main center that existed in Memphis and Shelby County, um, to help visually impaired people who are experiencing vision loss, uh, was located off of Popular Avenue. It closed in March of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, so there's a large gap. The only other program that really addresses this issue is through the state of Tennessee, is the Independent Living Program. We are connected with them. That is how we've been able to help the persons that we've helped in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, next up, the solution that we have presented, obviously I mentioned some of those, uh, conditions, those visual impairment conditions that people are dealing with. Our solution is a basic introduction of Braille code, uh, that is found on public building signage. Um, so restroom, you know, numbers that are in elevators, things like that. Um, we're proposing that we introduce those through our Independent Living Toolkit. You all will see that, I think, on page four or five of the package that we presented. So we want to be able to give these kits, um, to seniors in our area for free. Okay.
What's inside the toolkit?
Uh, okay, now the one I brought, I looked at, it's not Braille, but inside of the toolkit are a series of, um, cards, basically that teach, teach Braille. So the Braille is in the bottom corner of all of these. Let me find one that has a sign. The signage. That you see in public buildings. Um, again, there is a law that requires that there's Braille everywhere. If you've ever noticed Braille, or you've never been exposed to Braille in your lifetime, you probably have seen it on your ATM. Um, when you pull up at a McDonald's, you might have seen it on the window. When you go into an elevator, you see it on the numbers. However, it's not functional if you can't read it. And the persons who actually need that can't read it, mo, in most cases. So our, our goal is to introduce Braille to those who need it.
But how many people do you serve?
Right now, we've only served twenty-seven. That's in two thousand and twenty-four.
Two thousand and twenty-four. Okay, and what's your, what's your aim?
Our aim is to serve as many as possible. Um, I know that the Independent Living Program with the state receives referrals for persons who have been declared legally blind at the numbers of approximately thirty to fifty, uh, per month, thirty to fifty per month, citizens of Memphis and sometimes Shelby County, but citizens, um, who have experienced a vision loss significant enough to be declared visually impaired, thirty to fifty citizens a month.
I see, I'm looking at your, your, your funding request. A portion of it, you say, um, K through twelve. Did you all make a request of the, uh, M, MSES?
No.
Talked to any, talked to any of the school board commissioners?
Not yet.
Go ask them for some money.
Not yet.
Um, and then my next question, so assuming the council gives you the full, your full request, how many people you think you can serve with? I think your request from us is seventy-five, about a little bit over seventy-five, okay?
Um, we, we've done what we've done right now with no funding for this particular program. Um, I believe that we would be able to give the free, the free intervention kit to thirty to fifty Memphis-based citizens a month.
And then my last question, um, so the reason I make you a lot of questions is because I, this is the first time I heard of a program like this. I'm, I'm learning. Yeah, so this is awesome, first of all. How many, how many people do y'all have on staff? Is it volunteer? I know some pay. Nope, nobody's getting any money? Oh, wow. Okay, okay. So some regret for, for requests. So just y'all two?
We're now, we're now, we do, we, we connect with, um, if I may, we connect with organizations, say for example, youth villages. We've been able to go into their programming because, I don't know if you're familiar, but a, a lot of their students.
I'm familiar.
And so they don't have the luxury of hiring full-time teachers and things like that, so we've been able to connect with them. Um, also, uh, in the seat that I sit in, we have Alpha Kappa Alpha, and so as we're going in and out of the community.
See, you have. You have, you say AK now, you know, some people to my right and behind me going, don't know how to act.
To your right and to your left. Uh, but we've been able to, as we're going in and out, we primarily service, um, Fraser Raleigh Bartlett. So as we're going in and out of, say, some of the facilities, like homeless facilities, rehab facilities, identifying their need, it's coming up more and more that the elderly, um, or our senior population is one of those disenfranchised populations. And so, the K twelve piece is kind of managed through the school district because they do have, uh, programming. But once you exit that, um, i- it's not robust.
So primarily referrals?
Definitely referrals, and then just as we come across the need, um, and then as you mentioned, we were working with, um, connections with bulk rehab a little bit.
Yeah, that's pretty cool, pretty cool. I haven't heard of any organization like this. Usually, when we deal with organizations, what I like to see is, you know, a, a niche. I feel like y'all carved out something that's definitely a need, and, you know, I don't know, any other organizations, you know, really reaching out to this, this population. So thank you all for the work that you do. Any other questions from this body? Councilman Ford, Mike, 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 Mike.
It's just you said you could have maybe thirty to fifty people a month?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all enough.
All right. Any other questions from this body? All right, well, thank you all for the work that you do, and, um, I'm excited about this program. It's pretty cool.
Thank you.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing, I'm teasing, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
We had a photo op while you guys.
Y'all had a photo op?
Ready to come in.
You didn't let me photo bomb it, see?
All the back, bro. Vanessa Sweet, three zero six five Kennedy Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one two eight.
Ephraim Simmons, uh, thirty-two, thirty-three sixty-two Jewel Road, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one two eight.
Oh, we listen to the, the zip codes, that's how we know the city. And I need to text Councilwoman Logan, say, hey, we here. All right, go ahead.
Well, thank you for having us, first of all. And I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Breakthrough Leadership Foundation that was founded in two thousand and sixteen. And our mission was to provide educational training, support to individuals and organizations as they seek to serve their purpose, their gifts, and their abilities. The two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one school year reminds us of how unprepared our more than ninety thousand, ninety-four thousand students in the public schools were unprepared and unready for digital platforms. Our digital literacy pro, project was created to help bridge the gap of marginalized communities where most youth are consumers online. They spend more time gaming, being influenced, rather than owning and creating entrepreneurial opportunities through e-commerce. In two thousand and twenty-three, Breakthrough Leadership partnered with Climb Nine O One to host a summer digital exposure program for high school juniors and seniors at Knowledge Quest. This six-week boot camp was successful in exposing youth in our community from marginalized areas of Memphis to technical career opportunities. These twenty-five students gained knowledge about digital currency, digital marketing, and basic concepts of the digital world. They were able to create and showcase projects to local businesses, and they received recognition for their participation. Other partners in this, uh, digital event was Memphis Grizzlies and Best Buy. We reschedule, we're scheduled to host more of these programs in two thousand and twenty-five with partners like Climb Nine O One, Persevere, Southwest Community College, Shelby County Schools, Local Businesses, the Memphis Christians Pa, Pastors Network, and Successful Living Economic and Community Development Corporation. The goal of the Ascent Digital Boot Camp is to host three to five camps in two thousand and twenty-five, and is to empower, to train, and to equip our youth with exposure to digital careers and business opportunities, and along with digital certifications. Additional information about the Digital Ascent Boot Camp you should have as a handout before you, and our budget request is eleven thousand dollars. Our total budget expenses is eighty thousand dollars. Thank you for your time.
You write up Councilwoman Walker's alley, uh, with graphic design.
Yes, thank you for coming, and thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to say I appreciate the fact that your youth category goes all the way to age twenty-five, because a lot of them cut off at eighteen and twenty-one. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, because we recognize in our current program that we're doing electrical apprenticeship, and those who are twenty-five and twenty-six, they were there during the pandemic, and they missed out on some of their years where they really needed in-person. So this is not a digital camp, this is an in-person camp. Thank you.
About how many, um, I guess, you fourteen to twenty-five, do you, have y'all? About how many, I guess, U fourteen to twenty-five, do you have y'all serving or seeking to serve?
We're seeking to serve twenty-five at a time. That's as much as we can give one-on-one customer care to really listen and tune in, to do an assessment where there would really be a win-win opportunity for our city as well as for them. Not just to cattle them in and then dump information on them for them to have some true takeaways. And you'll see the takeaways on one of the slides of some of the outcomes that'll come from that program. A total of two hundred in a year's time.
Goes two hundred a year's time, okay. See, tell them what to do again. Any other questions from the body? All right, appears that all hearts and minds are clear. Consistently reach out to the council members. Like, you gotta call them and talk to them, email them. Catch them in the hallway, catch them outside the grocery store, talk to them. But thank you all for the work that you do. Look forward to hearing about all the great things that you will do. So, thank you. Who's next? I don't know if I really want to hear from Devon. Is she next?
Yes.
Can we skip her? Oh, okay. All right, come on, come on, come on, come on. Uh-uh.
We have.
No, I want it.
Is it different from the one that? Okay.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. I don't have it. All right, talk to us. Name and address for the record and introduce this young man beside you. Your mic's not working.
It's on now?
Yeah, regardless accidentally muted your mic.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Devaney Perry. My address is seven twenty Lyddie Court.
Good afternoon, my name is Jonathan Mosley and my address is two five nine three Hale Avenue, three eight one one two.
Oh, three eight one two.
Funding request.
Funding request.
Just skip straight to it.
All right. So Building Memphis, we're a community development association. We also just celebrated twenty-five years, so thank you for the recognition two weeks ago. One of the big things from that recognition and also just the culmination of celebrating twenty-five years was we really went through the decades of the organization and really of the sector of community development. And what we found was, at the end of public housing in Memphis, and people are now in Memphis, a lot of, mostly a transient community, specifically in our neighborhoods where there are mostly black and brown people. With that, what we have found is, over the twenty-five years, the community development industry has sought to provide services to people who no longer live in those types of communities that they are used to for generations. And also, those services look like affordable housing, livability, support with safety elements as well as workforce elements. And what we have here in this presentation is, we spent about three years focusing on entrepreneurship within neighborhoods with a lot of residents who were not necessarily aware of a lot of the small business programming that exists within Memphis, like your chambers and your small business development centers. And what we did was, we brought mobile small business assistance into neighborhoods. We reached about over a thousand businesses over a two-year period. We were able to have, within seven of the communities that we were working in, this program that we have called Memfix, which is a one-day simulation to showcase the demand for development and investment in small business corridors within our neighborhoods. Pearl was a part of our Whitehaven Memfix event, which was also in Southland Mall, which was really big. We worked with the, well, you all worked with the, the property managers of the mall so that we could get bays for small businesses that were place-based there, from Whitehaven, in Whitehaven. And they had the opportunity to get a free bay, well, we paid for it, but a free bay at no cost so that they could really launch and support and continue their business. We did this in seven communities, Whitehaven, Klondike, Fraser, Heights, South City. I'm missing someone. Alsey Ball and, there's just one more I can't recall. So our funding request is, we want to continue this work. A lot of the businesses, we built so much infrastructure within neighborhoods that we are trying to figure out what's the best way so that we can, more or less, move this space and all of this learning and knowledge into a central space so businesses have access to it. We do want to host one more Memfix, a Memfix is twenty-five thousand dollars. We also want to work with one of our peer organizations in DC where they've been able, as a community development association, to move a lot of business resources that are available specifically for neighborhoods and folks that are really in community to have access to business development services that fit their needs. And my personal goal is that our community development organization serve as somewhat of a hub, a conduit within neighborhoods. So those resources that they may not know about, or maybe that person gets off work at six PM or seven PM, they won't have access to come to a small business workshop somewhere downtown. So how do you make sure that you still are capturing them, their entrepreneurship? Because their business may only operate on a Saturday. And I met many businesses like that. So our goal is to continue to provide services and then be able to take this program and to put it in some type of format where. Well, the full Small Business Development Program, we haven't really named it. It was what it was once called. It was previously funded through an SBA grant. And that particular grant ended in the spring of this year.
So the request for the council is not the funded program. The request for the council is kind of, kind of broke up between several different categories. The Technical Assistance Program, Memfix, and then a Small Business Resource Database?
That is, that is the program.
Okay, Small Business Resource Database is the program.
So what we have here is, we provide, we support technical assistance and business outreach to businesses within a place-based community. And what we're also trying to do is, so that that business has more access to resources, we're also going to build a website. On top of that, we also want to give the space for at least one more community to have a Memfix event because we only had seven last year. And we have about twenty-seven members. So that's a whole network of neighborhoods that are all wanting to say, hey, what about us?
What about us? Okay. Any other questions from this body? I'm gonna support this organization, maybe. I'm definitely supporting this organization. I asked my council members to do the same. Their request is fifty thousand. They do a lot of work in the community. If you've ever, if you've never been to their place, please go check it out. It's not too far from here. Make it, check it out today. I'm not sure if Devon will be there yet. But in all seriousness, y'all, this is an organization that does a lot of good work. I hope y'all support it. I have my support. Just like I told everybody else, please reach out to the council members consistently, often. I know y'all, both of you know most of them, so reach out to them, text them, call them, and get them to support you.
This is our first time making a funding request that, well, I can't say first time, but.
Mr. Mosley's not scared to ask for money. He not scared to ask for it. So just be sure to reach out to the council members. I'm assuming we have all our allocations in the next couple of weeks and y'all are here to be hearing from us. So consistently reach out. I know Pearl's gonna support you. So, all right, thank you all for being here. Thank you for the work that you all are doing in the community.
Thank you. Should I turn this off or are you gonna mute it?
Somebody else could come sit in that high seat. I'm gonna stop asking some questions because I'm definitely making us go over. BSOY Foundation. Come on down.
All right, hello, good afternoon.
Name and address for the record.
Brelon Coleman, thirty-five zero six Suzanne Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, three one two seven. All right, so.
There's this young lady beside you.
Alyssa Coleman, thirty-five oh six, three eight one two seven.
Y'all related?
Yes.
I know.
Maybe sister, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, good evening, everyone. As I've said, I'm Brelon. I'm the CEO and founder of the BSOY Foundation, now known as the BSOU Foundation. We are aiming to be the leading organization representing and addressing the lack of resources, spaces, and opportunities for youth and minorities through empowerment, entrepreneurship, community, and economic development, especially in our underserved communities. We are here today seeking funding from the Mississippi City Council to support our initiative for our today's Young Entrepreneurs Summer Experience, also known as our TYE Program. Now, this initiative is planning to host ten week-long workshops throughout the summer of two thousand twenty-five, directly impacting over five hundred youth and minorities ages twelve to twenty-four. Some of our key impact areas include crime and drug prevention, youth empowerment, economic development, and poverty alleviation. I wholeheartedly believe that our city puts a lot of resources and funding and efforts into our response tactics, and we should be focused on prevention. Let's stop it before it gets there, and we are the answer to the solution. We are the prevention-based organization. And our program hopes to educate, empower, and offer resources to our youth and minorities to help them create a positive legal, financial, and economic change for themselves and their peers. And so with your support, we are aiming for a ninety percent increase in youth entrepreneurship knowledge and a seventy-five percent decrease in youth crime involvement through this program by providing them with the resources and opportunities and spaces. So, yeah.
You did a lot. I'm familiar with you and your organization, but you have access for money. What's the request?
Yes, so we are requesting ten thousand dollars. Our total budget is thirty-three thousand. Ten thousand is where we're looking to start. We do have some other requests going out throughout the city from other opportunities, other grants. So we are looking to get that total done. These funds will help us do, as I said, ten workshops. So every workshop will host about fifty youth and minorities through the age gap of twelve to twenty-four. We have an amazing support system, some amazing volunteers. A lot of people ask about staffing. How are you going to staff this many people? We work based off volunteers, mentorship. A lot of people commit their time to what we do.
How long have you been at it?
At this? Since I was fifteen, starting in two thousand fifteen.
I wanted them to hear that. He said you sixteen.
Basically, basically, twenty-three, but same thing.
You're right, you're right. She's been pretty active in the community for a while. I'm not even sure where I mentioned it.
The BSOU.
But, you know, I think, I think whenever we have an opportunity to support a new organization, especially particularly when a young person is leading an organization, we should, we have an obligation to do that because there's plenty of places they could be. But they choose to do good in our community, I think, is worthy of support. So I'd be supporting this organization. I hope that our council members do the same. Ten thousand, I hope we can get them to ten thousand, y'all. Yeah, you do. Now you do. I feel like Councilwoman White has a question because she's asking for your documents. So Councilwoman White, the floor is yours. If you don't have any questions, say, if you don't have any questions, share some good wheels, good vibes, energy that way.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Your organization, how do you, where do you find these kids? What's your, what's your method of identifying them? Those that are, need to be impacted by your organization?
So we do a lot of partnerships with Memphis City Schools and Shelby County Schools. We're actually going to Melrose High School next week to host a two-day workshop. So we're in the school systems. We're identifying who are looking for these resources and spaces that we offer to just kind of get the awareness out there that, hey, we are, we are here and we have this. We also partner with other organizations who service those in our age gap and in our demographics. So we've partnered with Girls Inc., Memphis Allies, and a couple others, but also just putting boots to the ground. I'm only twenty-three, so I'm still in the age gap that I serve. So a lot of it is just me being out in the community and going to events, networking, meeting my peers where they are. And unfortunately, a lot of time that's in the streets. And so I walk outside in my T-shirt and jeans and say, hey, look, I look like this, but I do this, and you can do it too.
What's your percentage of turnaround of how long you've, how long you've been doing this?
Since two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. And what's your turnaround percentage?
So due to, of course, the lack of funding typically, we have only been able to host four of these workshops. We had about two hundred and fifteen, I believe, participants. And out of that number, we've had sixty successfully who are still actively in business.
So what, your real issue is sustainability?
Yeah.
You don't have enough sustainability to continue to offer your program?
Yes, ma'am.
In the city?
Yeah, that's why we're, we're here today and hoping for you all's support and endorsement so we can continue to do the work.
So this ten thousand will only last for just this year, for this, for this, for this summer?
We'll be hosting ten week-long workshops.
Question. Councilman Ford will tell you, go to the other side of the street, asking for support as well.
Will do.
All right, well, appears that all hearts and minds are clear. Thank you all for being here. You want to say something? You're lucky ready to say something. You proud of your sister?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you all for being here. I'm proud of you all, keep doing a good work in our community.
Thank you.
They were making sure I didn't read this wrong because there's a typo on our side. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Can you all hear me?
Do you need the PowerPoint to be up?
It, it looks like this is a Mac, so probably not going to work with the.
It is, it's working on every computer.
I don't, I break it. It don't leave me on no laptop.
That's why it's good to ask for help. All right. My name's John Rodney, thirty thirty Covington Pike, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one two eight. And this is my wife, Diana Costa.
Diana Costa, thirty thirty Covington Pike.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here. Um, my name is John Rodney. I'm a family physician, uh, the medical director and president of the Camellia Foundation. Uh, we've been operating in North Memphis, uh, close to Craigmont High School since the year two thousand, uh, twenty-five years of service to the community, uh, providing specifically medical education and services, uh, to both our population locally and to the city at large. Uh, on a side note, we provide mentorship programs for students looking to become doctors, nurses, or physician assistants in partnership with the University of Memphis, and four of our students have gotten into medical school in Memphis. Uh, we also provide training as for medical assistance, and that's important because people who train here stay here, and we're committed to staying in this community and growing the leadership for the future. Uh, specifically today, we're going to talk about our Behavioral Health Clinic expansion. We're looking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding, which represents a little less than five percent of our annual operating budget. Uh, annually, we serve approximately twenty thousand patients and sixty thousand patient visits a year. Statistically, if you look at the needs of the community, especially after COVID-nineteen, uh, as well as the epidemic of gun violence in the city, many of our, uh, patients and community members have needs beyond traditional primary care, namely, therapy for PTSD, specifically trauma, uh, family therapy, and substance use. So, what we're looking to do is, we've actually started a behavioral health, uh, clinic called Medico's Behavioral Health. Um, it serves uninsured members of the Latino and African-American communities, uh, specifically within the African-American community. A large portion of the male population is uninsured because of the state's refusal to expand Medicaid, which hopefully that'll change, but unfortunately, not anytime soon. And then, we're specifically working with the Shelby County Office of Reentry to provide behavioral health and primary care services to patient, um, to patients who have justice involvement, uh, leaving either the jail or the prison system and then re-entering to the community. Uh, many of them have appointments at places like Alliance and, um, Serenity and Caps, but there's a gap in care about three to six months before they can get placement of services. So, what happens is DeAndre calls me, I take the phone call, I get the medical records from, uh, Well Path, which is the organization that services the jail community, and provide telehealth services for the patients at the point of entry to where I refill their medication. Um, this is important because patients who have mental health needs, who are unmedicated and released into the community, have a much lower chance of success for re-entering our community in meaningful ways. So, we're bridging that gap actively, but to anticipate Chairman Smiley's question, we've received no funding from the county, but it sounds like we should ask for it.
So, also, we align, uh, we work with Plaza Pharmacy, that they deliver the drugs to other medication to the patients, and we also, if they are not allowed to go to our, uh, facility, we do telemedicine.
So, I have a question, uh, regardless of questions, I made some regardless questions.
Sure.
It's fine. I put it on the spot. Um, what's the affiliation between the two?
Camellia Foundation is a five oh one C three, and then the name of the clinic itself is Medico's Medical Center.
So, is the foundation the five oh one three C arm of Medico's?
Correct. Well, it's the umbrella organization for it all.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I think, you know, a lot of times people ask us what makes us unique. I think our location and commitment to service, but one thing that's very different about our organization is we're actually open seven days a week. So, we have a large patient population that can't necessarily get service during the traditional days of the week, kids are in school. Um, also, people don't get sick just Monday through Friday, so we're open on Saturdays from nine to four and also on Sunday from twelve to four. Uh, that's something that I don't think any other nonprofit organization does in the city, but being open seven days a week, um, our community impact, we employ about eighty-five, uh, individuals throughout our organizations, uh, twelve physicians, um, two nurse practitioners, a physician assistant, and then the expansion, we're hiring two counselors and then a psychiatric nurse practitioner, which is the basis for the funding, because any time you open up a new aspect of a medical practice, the anticipated time it takes to actually break even is two to three years. So, we're looking for bridge funding essentially from the city to help us address this need without putting the rest of our budget at risk. Just a couple photos of the people. We also attract a lot of people through our fellowship program. Uh, we've attracted people from California, uh, from between California and New York to come in a two-year fellowship program that's affiliated with Mahary Medical College. One of the benefits of that fellowship is that it's a unique way to attract physicians to the area, which is traditionally, unless you're a Saint Jude researcher, difficult to get new physicians to, to work and serve in the community. And then, actually, many of the graduates of our program are staffing hospitals ranging from Regional One, Christ Community Center, uh, and Church Health. Now, we have our kind of impact from an educational standpoint in all of the five oh one C threes that are seen throughout the city, and we're very proud of that. I think also, in bigger news, you can see our University of Memphis. Oh, am I over?
No, you're not over, I just.
Sorry.
Sometimes I get way too inquisitive. Um, so, the, the funding request from the, uh, the council is to do what exactly? It's not, it doesn't appear to be, um, to carry out the programs, is it to build a facility?
It's to fund and staff the behavioral health program.
Fund and staff behavioral.
So, the average salary for a psychiatric nurse practitioner within the city is a hundred and forty thousand dollars annually. For a counselor or a therapist, it's sixty to seventy thousand dollars. To just address the needs of the patients we serve, thirty-three to forty percent of them have mental health or substance use issues. If you multiply that by twenty thousand, that's about eight thousand.
How many, so, the request would give you how many people for how long?
Uh, two counselors and a psychiatric nurse practitioner, uh, that would fund those positions, and then.
For a year?
Uh, for a year, and then.
Ish.
A year-ish, but the goal is for a medical practice to become solvent. It usually takes two to three years. I think we have a pretty big advantage in that our established patient population is already in the building.
Mm-hmm.
So, as we build the services up, I don't see this as being an indefinite request, but something is more of a seed grant to help us address the needs of the community.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm, I mean, I'm good.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for coming out, if you're, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and thank you for everything y'all do in the community. If any council member or anybody in this room or listening online has a chance to go visit with Dr. John and, um, check out the facility and see the work they do, it's pretty amazing.
I'm not there yet, is Dr. Rodney?
Dr. Rodney, that's right.
I'm not there yet.
Dr. John, you'll get there.
There's, we're, there's, we're right across from Marshalls on Covington Pike.
I know exactly where you are.
Yeah, exactly, that's, uh.
There is a, there is a building not too far from you all, I think at the corner of Covington Pike. My, uh, my very first basketball coach attorney, uh, Jimmy Drew was in that building for a long time, so I know exactly where y'all are.
Yeah.
And one last thing for perspective that you shared with me once, um, on the size of, of, uh, you know, I compare, I think, Church Health Center, like, how many people from a volume perspective, just so the council and everybody understands, how many people you actually see? Because this is your first grant request.
Right.
You're privately, uh, maybe just explain that a little bit, because you make a big impact in the community.
Right, well, we've, uh, it was started by my father, who was the chairman at Mahary Medical College originally, because he felt like the needs weren't being met for communities of color in the city, uh, specifically Methodist North Closer Labor and Delivery Unit, and then there was a large migrant population that's growing. Um, and then, when he was at another organization, he said, we need to get some people to translate for them, they told him no, so he funded it himself. He actually mortgaged our house to start the clinic.
Do you still have a house?
Yes, we do, but it was. We see sixty thousand visits a year, which is a, a little bit more than Church Health. I didn't want to create. Right, but.
And how many are new?
Uh, and we also deliver thirteen hundred babies a year, uh, which is, especially with the maternal health crisis, I think that's being seven days.
So, one last question, so I see that, it says y'all don't turn anyone down.
Right.
So, since y'all do, y'all write off a lot?
We do. We provide, uh, specifically just the reentry program, for example. We see everyone who needs help regardless of their ability to pay. If someone comes in, they have an acute health issue, the answer is always yes, how can we help? We may not be able to fix all the problems, but we can definitely get them started.
Well, well, yeah, thank you, thank you. We, we need more programs like this. Seems like y'all in the business for the right reason, which is to help people, so thank you all.
Right.
I know Councilwoman Cooper Sudden wants to, uh, ask some questions.
Just one quick question, um, your referral, uh, you don't have a, your behavioral health, so you don't have an in-house. So, when your patients come and they are need to be committed.
Right.
Um, what partnerships are you with? Because I know Alliance now, we have, the city of Memphis have funded Alliance, and I know Parkwood as well, I know Crestwind and all of those places. So, do you have you partnership, because this is, you're building this, you're baking this into your.
Right.
Organization, am I right, to behavioral health?
Right. We have partnerships with specifically Delta Medical Center, um, and we work with Alliance, but a lot of times, there's so many people who are so acutely ill, meaning with schizophrenia or just.
Floratorial hallucination, yeah.
A lot of the patients who have significant needs but not as acute fall through the cracks to where our non-urgent referral time, wait time has been three to six months. And, and by the time they reach that point, what we're trying to do is kind of reach the people who are in that waiting line queue to help them get access to services more acutely. And it's not a knock on them, Alliance does amazing work, it's just the needs are so large for that organization. I think they have maybe between four and eight, uh, beds for uninsured patients for the whole city in acute health crisis. It's, it's, it's a real problem, and I think it's directly related to, um, criminal, uh, charges and activity. I think it's just a lot of people who need mental health help, um, and not necessarily people who are bad people or per se, they just don't have access to the care they need. Three to six, and, and that's true for the reentry population as well. And, and again, it's, it's not because Alliance is doing a bad job, it's just the need is that great. It's just the need is that great. Eight uninsured beds are available for them specifically, then MMHI has some. Right, right. Right.
We need to hurry up, because, um.
Well, you can.
My bosses are telling me I'm asking too many questions.
Okay.
It's my fault.
Well, I'm, I'm, this is my first grant presentation, so, and this is the first time I'm hearing of you, so I just want to just make sure. Yeah, and behavioral health was my baby. Yeah, babe, that was my past life, behavioral health, uh, dealing with all these organizations, and I knew that we invested in Alliance, but I didn't know they had only eight uninsured beds.
Well, it's.
Thank you.
They're, they're more than beds, too. They have a lot of other services they provide, so don't, not trying to knock Alliance, they're great.
We're learning here, we're learning here. Thank you all so much. Um, thank you for the work you're doing. You're doing the real work, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, hold up, Councilman Ford wants to say something, please don't leave.
I like you in the beginning. You remind me of my brother. My brother changed, he was a doctor also. You know, the work that you're doing, like you said, if they don't have you, don't turn them down. You know, he was an ophthalmologist, he, and a regular doctor also. He did some everything, and all of his patients, half of them didn't have no money, so he didn't charge none of them, but he may have kept them there all day, you know, in line. But one thing about it, when he kept them there, he fed them breakfast, lunch, and dinner if they had to, okay? But what you're doing, hey, and it's not that many out there that's doing what you're doing. You need to bring some more of these doctors in, I, I'm gonna pre on that one, where you can do what you need to do, okay? And make sure you go across the street. My son, Junior's over there, so you make sure.
Okay.
That you let him know that Senior said, okay?
Will do.
And, and make sure, because it's a great program, and I want you to grow constantly, okay? Appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ford.
Can I call you Dr. John yet? I'm jealous.
That's fine, okay.
All right, Dr. John, have a good one, brother.
All right, thank you.
Caregivers Refresh? Come on down. Sit in the hot seat.
Hello?
Hello, whenever you, do you need the, uh, PowerPoint screen up or you're good?
No, sir, I do not.
I like you already.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, name and address for the record. We're in a row.
My name is Ron Avan, A-V-E-N. Uh, we're located at forty-one thirty-one Kenosha, three eight one one eight. Uh, I am the president of the board of directors of Caregivers Refresh. Our CEO had intended to be here, took ill yesterday, the doctor told her to go somewhere and lay down and be quiet. So, she called me this morning, and here I am. Caregiver Refresh Center is a rested program for family caregivers, those people who place their lives on hold to care for an elderly parent, a child with a disability, a family member with dementia or Alzheimer's disease, or some other debilitating family dynamic. Through this mental and emotional self-care program, we help family caregivers manage stress, burnout, isolation, and loneliness by regaining balance in their lives and continuing to provide quality care and helping deter the need for long-term hospitalization, nursing home admissions, neglect, and abuse. Family caregivers not only expend their mental and physical well-being in caring for their loved one, but there is frequently a financial consequence since many caregivers must quit their jobs or accept reduced hours to do what is needed, as well as often having to use their personal finances to supplement the resources of their loved one. Studies have shown that women, the predominant family caregivers.
Can I just ask you a couple questions?
Yes, sir.
So, I just want to make sure I understand this program. So, basically, this program is aimed to help, um, those individuals caring for, um, sick, their sick family members?
Exactly.
And what exactly, what benefits do you offer those folks?
Well, there are a lot of rested programs, but those are based on a medical model. They teach people how to turn, how to lift, how to feed.
I already know about it.
And that kind of stuff. We are focused on the caregiver as a person, because if we can help them get beyond that stress, loneliness, and burnout, then they can continue to provide quality care.
So, so, like, what do y'all do with them? Like, y'all bring them food?
This is a, this is a.
Call them.
This is a faith-based program.
Pray with them.
Where we meet, uh, several times a week. We have a life coach that helps them deal with mental, emotional, or, or spiritual issues they may be having. We've got a fitness instructor that shows them how to do, uh, low-impact exercises to keep their bodies strong for, for the rigors of caregiving. We've got a, uh, uh, pampering opportunity just to help caregivers feel good, and we provide a light lunch, and it's all free.
And my next question for you is, I don't, I don't see it in here, but, uh, Ms. Keating pointed to me on this big spreadsheet. Um, what's the funding request?
Funding, funding request is nine thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
Okay. Sounds like a reasonable request to me, uh, for those of you who've never taken care of a sick family member. It sucks, but it's something we all must do, so please support this organization. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, CBC Foundation. CBC Foundation going once? Does you? I'm a, uh, so, for the next people, the next couple of presentations, I'm gonna kind of just get straight to the point. So, whenever you're ready, let me know, I'm gonna start asking some questions.
Right.
I don't think you'll need your presentation. You ready? What's your name? Name and address for the record.
Belinda Campbell seventeen sixty-six Greenview Circle, Memphis, three eight one oh eight.
All right. I know this young lady.
Very good.
So, back in the day, when I used to go to Bartlett Rec Center. Uh, all right, so tell me about the organization and, uh, about what they do, the founder as well, and then I'm gonna ask you what the funding request is, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'm here representing Carrie Bernans, Carrie Connor Bernans, who is the founder of CBC Foundation. Uh, Carrie is a young lady that graduated from Bartlett High School and also from the University of Memphis. Many of you know her as the young lady who did a black, a role in Black Panther. Uh, this young lady here is one that has given back to Memphis in many, many ways. Uh, she resides in Los Angeles now, and she is pursuing her career there in theater. I'd like to start with, if I could just ask a question. For the children's sake, is it impossible to believe that we can get rid of poverty? In two thousand eighteen, Carrie Bernans was the founder of the CBC Foundation. Her mission with a laser beam focus was on CBC's acronym, YEPS. Y-E-P-S. Y is for youth empowerment, the E is for economic and community development, the P for poverty eradication. the P for poverty eradication, and the S for social justice. YEPS. This is three of the four goals, Memphis City Council, that you are asking us to dig into here. By employing these YEPS, then even we are able to conquer your fourth goal of crime and drug prevention as well.
So could you tell me about the core program? So what's the core program? Because I think the majority of the requests is for us to, I guess, essentially fund the core program. So tell us more about the core program. Thirty seconds or less. No pressure.
The core program has actually been focused initially on Carrie's willingness to give back. She had bouts of homelessness of her own, so she wanted to have an opportunity to give back to this community. From that, it has grown into the youth empowerment through doing financial literacy programs and also as they earn their way by having mandatory parental involvement, orientation, and by completing a series of financial literacy courses, also through literacy and reading, then they have been given a surprise where they have been able to go and shop for the very basics, like for socks, for underwear, for a warm coat, and then getting some of the desires that they otherwise would never have an opportunity to get. The problems here is that, you know, poverty is overriding.
How many, how many people you're planning to serve? Say the council grants you a fifteen thousand dollar funding request, how many people you planning on serving?
This coming year, planning to serve three hundred.
Three hundred, okay.
Yes.
And all over the city or in a particular area?
All over the city. We seek out young people through the churches, through the school system, through Neighborhood Christian Center, and we give them exposure to experiences, life experiences that they otherwise would never have, and being able to tap in and realize what it is their own personal strengths are. So that means partners like the Federal Reserve Bank and the curriculum there that we actually employ, and having them to be a part of that and understand how money works on a daily basis and for the future. The Dixon Gallery and having experiences there for the art exhibits and actual onsite interactions there each and every year. And this is our first time in actually asking the city of Memphis US Council members to actually support this initiative going forward. Looking at others, Carrie did a presentation to the Economic Club, so going around to all, but this would be an excellent opportunity for us to be able to further the work that's being done here. Her, herself, moving from a place of homelessness as a child and then now being able to give back.
What's your relationship with the organization?
I'm the vice president for CBC.
Well, any council members have any questions? So the funding request particularly is fifteen thousand dollars. You know, I'm a big supporter of folks who are doing good in our community, and y'all hear me say it all the time, when they do what they can to put the city of Memphis on the map, Carrie does a really good job. Everywhere she goes, she talks about Memphis from Black Panther to various other shows. So, you know, I think it's good when someone's doing well, coming back home, and doing what they can to support their family. CBC Foundation. The funding request is fifteen, reasonable, I think it's something we can do. All right, thank you so much. I'll be sure to tell her.
All right, well.
I already took a picture and sent it to her, so it's done.
Well, thank you so very much for the opportunity here.
Absolutely, and if Councilman Ford was here, he would tell you to go across to the other side of the street to ask the county commission. They have a similar program to the council grants program to have funding available twenty year-round. Ours is for a particular time period, there is this available year-round, so please be free, feel free to reach out to them, ask for funding as well.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Absolutely, and consistently reach out to the council members, send emails, get with their staff, ask for their cards, talk to them. That's how you get to whatever your funding request is. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
In her naming of the foundation itself, CBC, no, seed needs the water, the oxygen, and the right temperature in which to grow, and we need each of you to be a part of that watering for the growing and the thriving of our young people here.
You better shoot your shot. That's how you shoot your shot. All right, thank you, good job.
Thank you so much.
You gonna water? Let me tell you about this program I got, Councilman, I'm just playing. All right, what's next? CFAC. Okay, the CFAC here. You know, we do need to get caught back up. See, look, I was, I almost didn't make it. Good afternoon. Do I have the presentation? Oh, this is it here? I got it.
I am Bobby Shell Hunter, and we're located at thirteen thirteen thirty-one Union Avenue. Our program is called CFAC. Very quickly, and I'll go to, our, our mission is basically that we serve particularly flat families. We know that no matter what we do in our communities, unless we begin to strengthen families, a lot of the work that we do is going to be in vain. So our main thrust is actually strengthening families and their communities that they live in, and all of our other work is holistically around that, which means that we work with, we do work readiness, we do triumph over trauma, because a lot of our families and our youth experience trauma. We do mobile food pantries. I listened to Dr. John a few minutes ago talk about the demographics of all of the clients that he served. We get those clients. We get those people, because a lot of them are hungry, they, they're experienced trauma, and so these are some of the services that you have there. Some of the things that we have done since January of this, this year until now is we've done over twenty-eight, over two thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight referrals through the Drive and Dream Program with the United Way. We have served over twenty thousand, almost twenty-nine thousand families in four different communities within Shelby and within Memphis, Tennessee. We have over five hundred individuals that we have done workshops for doing triumph over trauma, not only with families but with youth as well. We have engaged over a hundred and twenty-five people in family strengthening programs, and we have two engagements that we try to do a year. One is coming up called Harambe that we probably will have to cancel because a lot of the vendors are, is still sort of new with the incident in Orange Mountain, and a lot of vendors have indicated that they, 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 they don't want to really be out in the open right now. However, we have Harambe that is scheduled at Audabahn Park, and we have Christmas in the Village, which we hope and pray that will continue in the Parkway Village community. And that's basically, we're asking the council for our community engagement and assistant budget is a hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred dollars, and we're only asking the city, the council, for fifteen thousand dollars. I don't need to go into the demographics of our city because we already know that, but we use holistic approaches for families, to strengthen families and their communities. Any questions? On Union Avenue with Young Man University, Dr. Futrell, we share an office. That's it. Listen, I was trying to go a hundred miles an hour because we've been here a little bit. This is my, yeah, this is really my second time a few years ago. I just hope that you all support this worthwhile effort.
Okay. And let's see, what are you supposed to do when you leave here? How do you get funded?
I've, I've already done that. I've already sent all of you all a letter.
She be listening, I like her. Yeah, so just
But I'll do it again.
Absolutely, consistently reach out.
To the county.
Yeah.
Thank you for your support.
You better receive that word. Okay, thank you, excellent job. Choices. I'm familiar. I'm familiar, I'm familiar. I think we have them.
Good morning, Jennifer Pepper, twelve oh-three.
I can't introduce myself. Good afternoon, I'm Nikia Grayson.
Dr. Nikia Grayson, our chief clinical officer, and I'm Jennifer Pepper, I'm the president and CEO. Hey, how y'all doing? We appreciate the opportunity. So Choices is celebrating our fiftieth year in Memphis this year. Over the last fifty years, we've helped one point seven million people, give or take a couple thousand, and we are coming to you for support with our midwifery and birth center program. So in January of two thousand twenty-one, Choices opened the first and only birth center here in Memphis. There's only two in the state, the other is with Vanderbilt in Nashville. And what makes our birth center unique from Nashville's is that we center not only black midwives and a black birth workforce, but also black and brown patients, particularly those on ten care, which a lot of OB-GYNs don't see anymore because the reimbursement rates are so abysmal when it comes to ten care. I can't actually tell you what they are, the state passed a law that said I can't, but it covers about twenty percent of the cost that it takes us.
My politics, let me not be too political. Well, question for you. So I see the funding request is just thirty thousand, so is that a salary?
Yeah, it's gonna pay for a portion of one of our certified nurse midwives. So certified nurse midwives are master or doctorally trained nurse practitioners. They provide the prenatal care, the labor, they provide the support during labor and birth, and they provide postpartum care for both the mother and then infant well checks.
You said a portion of a salary, how much, how much is?
Anywhere from a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifty thousand, depending on the market.
Okay, and any other questions? Because I just really want to understand the request. Next time, ask, next time ask for more.
We support about a hundred and fifty births a year.
Next time ask for more.
We will.
Okay. I don't think this body has, I think everyone in this body is very well aware of what Choices does and what Choices means to the community, so thank you for the work that you do. Continue doing the work. Stay still, I gotta take a picture. Okay, go ahead.
Check out our outcomes in the PowerPoint. We're birthing some of the healthiest babies and the healthiest parents in Shelby County and in Tennessee, and we're really proud of that work. So we hope for your support.
And we're the only clinic that has a postpartum program that lasts a year. We know that most of the poor outcomes we see in our community happen in the postpartum period, and most providers only see patients six weeks after they are, had a baby and they release them. But we keep our patients for up to a year, and we have a postpartum program that's pretty robust, and that also includes breastfeeding and has some of the highest breastfeeding rates in our community.
All right, well, I think the council should better get you to your, your funding request next time, ask for more. Questions from this body? Any questions from this body? Thank you all for the work you do.
Thank you.
I don't know where I'm supposed to go regardless. Never mind. Christian Psychological Center. Name and address for the record. Tell us a little bit about your program, because it's the first time funding request, I'm not familiar with it. And then get straight to the funding request.
I'm Dr. Lou Flowers Martin, you don't even have to call me Dr. Lou.
I was gonna call you Doc anyway.
You just called me Lou.
Lou.
Make it real easy. But we're so excited to be in front of you all. Christian Psychological Center, thirty-nine fifty Central Avenue, three-eight-one-one-one, right next to University of Memphis, on the properties of church and a school, and we feel a real obligation, a passion and a calling for responding to the trauma in the city. We have been around for forty-seven years. This is our first time, and, and part of that is because we have initiated a program, a, a initiative called Memphis Resilience Project, with the expertise of sixteen therapists with relationships that we have been in partnership with through, you know, forty years. We feel, like I said, the calling to respond to trauma and to take the relationships of those that we work with that Erin Reynolds, our managing director, will talk to you about. But we are endeavoring into the strategic plan that involves really becoming what we would like to be the wheelhouse for training, for trauma, and providing for all the different organizations that Erin, I think you can talk to us about, that we've established.
So I'm Erin Reynolds, and I'm the managing director at CPC, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to get accessible care, make that available for underserved communities. And beyond that, we're also trying to get training out into the community. So it's not so much about trying to get more people in the door, it's probably not really essential.
How soon? How soon? The pilot program's already going underway?
We've got the foundation in place, it would actually start teaching the skills in January.
Okay, so around the corner.
That we're trying to have become a curriculum that's evidence-based, and that's where the research in University of Memphis is.
Question, so the funding, the funding request, I think the funding request is fifty-five, is there fifty-five thousand going directly toward the pilot program?
It is, as well as to the Memphis Resilience Project, provides pipeline, training. We're trying to get trainees from masters level and post-docs into our facilities, so that we can keep these therapists in the city and can put them into various parts of the city. So that's another part of the Memphis Resilience Project. The pipeline of training, the getting the schools trained and counselors into the DBT program that's the pilot starting in January.
So training, training for the young people who experienced some type of trauma growing up, but also making sure we have the licensed folks here and don't leave. Am I missing, what else?
Correct. And we're also, so we're, we're partnering with a lot of nonprofits in the city, like the Neighborhood Christian Center, like Hope Works, to place some of our clinical trainees there to help with those populations that may have problem, for instance, holding down a job because they have anger management problems. The other, one of the other programs that we're doing is community trauma workshops. We started those last week where we're partnering with churches to talk about what is trauma, how does it impact your congregation, and how can we help give you resources to deal with it? So we've spoken, for instance, with Pastor Diane Young about helping to train her staff. So we've spoken, for instance, with Pastor Diane Young about helping to train her staff at the Emotional Fitness Center.
That's my mom's classmate. And those, yeah, very familiar where, Councilwoman Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for coming and for this information. I had one question, the, the people on your team who are, you mentioned trauma, are they helping individuals, when they work with individuals surrounding trauma, are they helping them identify and mitigate that trauma? Or what, what actually does that work look like and who trains those individuals?
That's an excellent question. So yes, we are trained to treat trauma. We use EMDR, we use DBT. We're also providing ways for those that aren't trained in the city through several within the next month to get the EMDR training. We also are treating those that have trauma through these grants so that those that don't have insurance, that cannot pay for self-pay, that we're able to get them the help they need from the mental health side. So that's another part of the Memphis Resilience Project.
So I was just gonna try to clarify, so it's multi-level. We have professional counselors who are doing one-on-one counseling with these evidence-based methodologies. But we're also trying to get skills out into the community at different levels. So for folks like at Church Health and Christ Community, those are professional counselors that we're providing training for on a professional level. But we're also trying to get training for church pastors and caring staff and laypeople just like us on a level of skills that can be used to just help your neighbor walk through trauma.
Okay, thank you, I yield the floor.
Alright, any other council members in the queue?
What did, what did, I think you may have said this time, missed it, where did the students come from?
Shelby County, you go ahead, you go ahead.
So we've reached out to charter schools, so Delta Prep, to a public school, Burclair, to, to the Neighborhood Christian Center for their after-school program, to campus schools. So we've got, through the summer programs that we did for school counselors, we've got these relationships and we're just building on those to try to provide them with a pipeline of resources and information and training.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, here's all hearts and minds are clear. Thank you so much, appreciate the work that you do. And y'all should go talk to Charlie Caswell.
We have.
See?
See, he's encouraged us to talk to you all too. I mean, we're, we're playing the seas and water.
When I, when I heard that, I said I could hear Charlie in my ear.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the work you do, we, we definitely appreciate it. I think this is one of the reasons, I think, it might not have been his council, it's probably a year before me and senior and we're on the council at the point, the council allocated an extra $2 million so that we can support folks who support people with mental health issues. So thank you all so much and dealing with trauma. Was it last year? I don't know what year that was, it's a lot, be there for a while. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Alright, City Leadership. You're not here, I'm gonna keep it moving, oh, she's ready. Alright, go straight to the funding request, we are like seven presentations behind. Straight to the funding request, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, council members are gonna ask a couple of questions.
Hey, Brian McCurry with City Leadership. Our office is at 1350 Concourse Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38111.
Alright, straight to the funding request, and I think most of us are, briefly give us a one-minute overview.
Yep, I'm gonna give it to you. Yeah, so John Carroll, if you're born in poverty in the United States, it's a, effectively a life sentence since 1968. Only 16 out of 100 kids born in poverty are out of poverty by age 30. In Memphis, that number is six. Only six out of 100 kids born in poverty will be out of poverty by the age of 30. So we have created a pipeline to move kids out of that scenario. We have 4,000 kids currently in our K through 12 process. We have 2,600 alumni. And what's really exciting is, is that what we found is, before we started this, six out of, those six kids who do get out of poverty, four out of those six end up moving to other cities. So you have to recruit and retain that talent to keep them here.
How do you do that?
And so, yeah, so Choose 901, it started back in 2012. And so you can see some of these pictures through here, we started Choose 901 Alumni Program. Joy Taylor, who's the founder of that, was gonna be here with us, but she is at the Civil Rights Museum right now and could not get away. But we go all over the country, we text her every week, we call her every month, we go visit her on college campus. We've got a whole alumni process and we help them persist through education, find a job, connect into the city.
Is that another program?
And we have.
I'm trying to hear you.
Yep, yep, yep. And so we do this through having great teachers. So our Teach 901 Program, we're the largest teacher recruiter of any single city in the United States. And then our Serve 901 Program where we get people to volunteer throughout this K through 12 pipeline. We identify kids at three and we take them all the way to 28.
So two questions for you. What's the?
We need a quarter million dollars.
There you go.
And we've also asked the county for the same amount. And we've emailed all you guys and I've even, I'll do whatever it takes. Listen, here's the deal. The, hey.
See, you got Councilman Spinoza here.
Hey, but listen, Phil knows I'll do whatever it takes.
You can't deny it to Spinoza.
But, but, but here, but here, but here's what I'd say is that, as you guys know, we've been self-funding this for 15 years. We're over 99% funded through our own private generosity, different kind of stuff. We need the city's help to keep this going and keep it growing. We're at 82% retention of our, our college graduates. We have 680 of those so far. We have 1,210 currently in four-year colleges. We've got another 250 in two-year programs right now. We've got another 400 in our jobs pipeline right now looking for jobs. I've got two full-time people that all they do is help place these people. And we are in competition for these students. Like, they will go to Dallas, they will go to Atlanta, they'll go to Nashville if we don't keep them here. And these, like, these pictures you're seeing up here on the screen, these are events where, these are people who've gotten jobs with us in that past year and having a celebration party through this. This is obviously our 901-day events that we've created about doing this. We got 100% college acceptance out of our students. So you can see them, they're all over the country, it's beautiful.
Couple of questions to help me figure out how we're gonna support you all. So primarily what was, the council's to grant your request, primarily what we're supporting is the ability for you all to be able to touch more young people, to get them ultimately choose to stay here.
To choose to stay here.
And bring their skills back.
Yes, yeah, so we've got staffing and programming funding that we're requesting. It's less than 10% of our overall budget. Honestly, we're, we're in the solve business instead of serve business. So the more money we have, the more people we will have.
So how many, how many people are we, we're supporting with the, so I say a part of it's the salaries and benefits?
How many?
People, staff, folks, volunteers?
Yeah, so we've got 18 full-time staff. And so, and, and then we've got another four part-time staff. Again, I mean, our stuff is, is if we had $5 million a year, we'd, we would have, yeah, we'd have 35 full-time staff. I mean, we could do more with every single dollar that we've, we've got with the work. Again, you know, our, our touch ratio here is very, very, you know, we're, we're serving a lot of people per staff person.
Well, thank you.
I don't have it on me, he's got one. Yes, yeah, yes. No ma'am, this is 365, 24/7. So literally, like, we, we staff them, we got staff, we call it relational recruiting. So we systematically work through every single relationship through this stuff. So we start by advertising the schools to get these kids into, we actually work with their parents along the way as well. We start coming into their classrooms, their junior year of high school. And then on day of graduation, they hand over the entire class of six schools over to us and then we take them for the next 10 years from there. We graduate 450 kids a year. So 85-plus percent of those are coming out of poverty in their K through 12 experience. And then we take all of them, whether they were in poverty or not, through that 10-year process.
Alright, well, thank you so much, we'll.
We'll have 5,000 alumni by 2030, guys. And if we do this and if we make it happen, we will, just our program will drop the poverty rate in Memphis by 2.5%.
Fun fact, I wear Choose 901 socks way too often.
Yes, alright, love y'all.
Absolutely appreciate y'all.
Anything y'all need, we'd love to talk to you as much as you want to.
See, so you said that you're gonna get an email from, from my office really soon, that's why I asked for a card. Alright, thank you all for the work that you do.
Appreciate y'all, thank y'all.
And I, and I love this energy.
Hey man, I'm all about it.
Where's Cooper Sutton at? I think he matched Cooper Sutton energy today. Class A driving. I might need a driving course, these tickets I'm getting. And these city of Memphis potholes, okay, I'm the. I was talking to Lynn Whitney, she says she getting a call from me. Put on a helmet, I'm concerned, you gotta put on a helmet in the car. It's bad, it's bad out here. You gotta let them go. Alright, Class A driver, talk to us, name and address for the record.
My name is Melvin Lewis, I'm CEO of Class A Driving Academy. We're located at 6075 Winchester Road in Memphis, Tennessee.
What's the zip code?
38115.
Crystal Robinson, serving at Class A Driving Academy, same address, same zip code.
Alright, you got a $55,000 funding request. Tell us what you're gonna do, not about the organization, what are you gonna do with the funds if the council grants you a full request?
What we would do with the funds, the, the cost of our program is $5,700 to get someone trained. Now, what we have to do, a lot of people come in who really want a CDL, could really need one or use one, but they don't have the funds.
So basically the council will be paying for about 10 people?
Yes, help us fund them, sometimes they only have a portion. We train them anyway, but it's to the point where we can't keep doing that. But we, we wanna train everybody that want a CDL and everybody want it better than life. I mean, we're right here in America's distribution center, I mean, it's, it's always freight in Memphis. And we billing up here at the Ford plant, we finna build a new bridge, we, we working on the.
555 acre expansion?
That's right, so we're gonna need drivers and it's, it's a big demand for drivers. And when they come, they get their license. And we don't train truck drivers, we, we call them professional drivers. Because we, at some point, we want these guys to get their own trucks, get their own authority, start their own business so they can leave an inheritance for their children. And that's what we're about, to teach these guys to be professionals. And, and we also teach them that their skills, their attitude means as much as their skills. We have to have good attitudes and personality if we wanna be successful.
Alright, um, okay, I mean.
I would like to add also.
Go ahead, tell the mic a little bit.
Yes, sir. So the funding request is comprehensive, it's not just paying for tuition. It also includes payroll to hire additional staff because we are growing, we do need an additional.
About how many people you have right now?
Enrolled right now, we have about.
Go ahead.
21.
21, then my question is about how many staff members?
Four, full-time staff members.
And how many of those staff members are certified to train? I'm not even sure what it takes to retain, I got it. I know I can't train nobody.
Yes, sir. The other portion of that, we are asking for funding for upgraded equipment. As you may know, rental, renting a CDL-level truck, sometimes the rental practices in Memphis are a little bit predatory. So the goal is to buy. The goal is to buy a truck that is of an upgraded status so that we're making sure we're training our students on the latest technology. Some of you may know that manual trucks have basically gone away and it is only the automatic truck that most of the employers want students to be trained on. So that is part of the funding. And the last part is Mr. Lewis mentioned. We have students who don't qualify for any type of agency help with their tuition and we want to be able to do scholarship.
Miss Robinson, is that your name?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so, how much is tuition?
Tuition is $5,700.
$5,700, okay. Alright, and how long is the course?
One, four to six weeks, they should be out of there in four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks, I thought you said four to six weeks.
No.
I was concerned.
Not four to six weeks. 160 hours is what the law requires, they have a minimum of 160 hours of training.
So a student can go from having no job, no skill, no credential, and in one month be certified to make a living.
And this is my last question, then I'm gonna ask the council if they are done and we'll have to go, because we're so far behind.
Let me just say this, we, we have people coming into the school looking for these guys so they can get a job. I, I just wanted to tell you.
So, you said four to six weeks?
Four to six weeks.
And how do you go out, how do you go by, I guess, reaching out to the folks in the community and say, hey, this program's available?
Right now, we have excellent partnerships with the growth program through the University of Memphis, with the Affirm program through Family Matters with Grace Carol Jackson, and also with Agape and the American Job Center.
Oh, so y'all are, okay.
So, most of our students are looking for a second chance and they don't necessarily have the resources, but these agencies are providing the resources.
Well, council members, I'm not gonna say, don't ask any questions, but, you know, we're over an hour behind. The ask is 55,000, 55,000. You know, they're giving people an opportunity to, to go to work. And you know, people always ask us about what can we do to reduce crime? Also, people possibly give them a skill set so that they can go to work. I think this is a, an organization's worthy of support, so thank you all for the work that you, y'all, y'all are providing indeed a service to this community, so thank you all.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I'll be emailing all of you.
Oh, yeah, and we are training people now at 18, so from 18 up, you can qualify for a CDL.
Okay, well, thank you. So email, call, and you're gonna ask the folks on the other side, right? And tell, tell them. That's the request? So what's, tell them next time, ask for what, more?
We will definitely do that.
And then just see what happens, you gotta shoot your shot. My, my brother would say close bows, you from Memphis, you know what they say. Alright, next group, Community Lift, come talk to us. Go with the ask for us. Alright, Community Lift, we're gonna get straight to it. Let's talk about your funding request.
Absolutely, good afternoon, council members. Our funding request is for $296,595. And that funding request is primarily to support funds across our organization as we are funding intermediary for community development corporations. A lot of our work actually is in supporting a lot of your districts. I think just in July, Mr. Chair, you were a part of Glenview Edgewood Beautification Project. That was actually a project funded by Community Lift there as well.
They had me out there way too long and I was sweating, my shoes was dirty.
We're gonna see what we can do about those time constraints on you, but.
And it was hot.
Absolutely, in July it was, absolutely. But that's one of the funding projects that we've been able to, or one of the projects that we've been able to fund in terms of beautification. Our projects range from micro, through micro grants at $2,500. That is actually a part of the Memphis Empowerment Fund and that is for any Memphian, any citizen of Memphis can apply for those funds. They do not have to be a 501(c)(3) to do so. And some of our other funds, our CDC Capacity Fund, for example, goes directly to providing capacity-building dollars for community development corporations across our city. We've touched roughly 100,000 people over the last 14 years or so. We've raised roughly $7 million and those dollars went directly to the streets of Memphis. Those dollars went to organizations and individuals across our city. Again, our funding request today is for $296,595 to shore up some of the, the gaps that we may have in some of our, our funds.
Talking about efficiency.
I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any, any questions from this, this, this body? I mean, a lot of us are, should be familiar with what Community Lift does. And they have you out there in the wee hours of the morning, digging up dirt. Alright, keep going.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Cowan, and thank you for that information. You did make reference to the empowerment fund and I wanted to speak to that directly. So just in case you all missed it, the empowerment fund, they not only fund 501(c)(3)'s, but they fund just laypeople in the community, individuals and organizations. And this is one thing that definitely makes them, two things that make them unique. There are not a lot of people who are coming before us who are taking the money and giving it back out to other organizations in the community. And then secondly, this is probably the only one, but it may not be the only one that is giving money to individuals and neighborhood associations as well whereby you don't have to have that 501(c)(3) designation. And my question to you is, why do you all choose to include that larger, cast that larger net and not make your? and not make your funding exclusive to five oh one C threes, although I do think it's great?
Absolutely. We, we believe in paths, pathways to participation. Um, we don't know where leaders are going to come from, right? So, we don't know where resident leaders will emerge. Um, and through the Memphis Empowerment Fund, we've been able to engage roughly three hundred, um, residents, individual residents who just want to do great things in their neighborhood. They are not propped up by an organization. They are not seeking a seat at the time, right? These are people in their neighborhood who simply want to clean the block, pick up some tires. So, what we've been able to do is to engage them in that way and really get that civic know-how engaged in community and communities, um, and community members connected in that way. So, that is, is just a great progress, actually one of our favorite, um, funds.
Absolutely. Excellent organization, y'all. If you don't know about them, look them up. Um, I would allow more questions, but we're literally way too far, way behind.
Thank you.
Reach out to them, reach out to them, reach out to them.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. And I know, reach out to all the council members.
Absolutely.
Let them know, call them, bother them, um, just let them know, in their style, in their style.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Go across the street. I was next, Deaf Connect of the Mid-South. See? Alright, name, address for the record. The floor is yours. Tell us what your funding request is and how you use those funds. Y'all been here for a minute. Y'all been hanging out. Alright, name and address for the record.
Natasha Parks, seventy-two forty-two Crest Ridge, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one nine.
Okay.
Um, I have brought a sign language interpreter. For fifty years, Deaf Connect of the Mid-South has been providing critical interpreting services, and resources to the deaf and hard appearing in Shelby County and West Tennessee. Our largest market of clients is in the city of Memphis. Last year, we provided twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-one hours of interpreting services, enabling individuals to access essential communications, um, in daily life. From doctor's appointments to legal engagements, to business transactions, to government meetings, to educational support, and even weddings and funerals. Um, wherever the deaf and hard appearing need to go, we are there to remove the communicate, communication barriers. These services not only support the community, the community quality of life, but also contribute to the economic vitality of Memphis. Um, today, we are respectfully requesting thirty thousand dollars from the Memphis City Council.
So, essentially, the funds that this body gives you all, you will use to hire interpreters?
More interpreters.
Do we use you all?
Yes, sometimes.
Sometimes, okay. I gotta remember what I be signing. I was like, I think, okay. But, um, thank you. I, I, I think what you all do is, uh, self-explanatory. I'm gonna tell you like, uh, I told the last group, I'm gonna tell you like Councilwoman Swearingen Washington said, next time I ask for more. Next time I ask for more. But, thank you all.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, we'll make this one. See, I like y'all a lot until y'all brought Michael Harris with y'all.
Thirty seconds.
Nah, we like Michael, we like Michael, we like Michael.
If I may address, my name is Kate Gray. I am a CODA. That's a child of a deaf adult. So, I've been a part of this deaf community for almost sixty-four years. When I was growing up, the support of the deaf community was by private donors. We don't have that support anymore. So, we are the original nine oh one interpreting services and we wanna remain that way. So, thank you in advance for your donation.
Yes, thank, thank you for the opportunity.
You finna say something here? Come on, talk to us.
Mike, okay, I thought that cut me off, okay. Mike Harris, four nine nine, South Hollywood, President, CEO, Memphis Metropolitan Land Bank Authority. I happen to serve on the Board of Directors of Deaf Connect. And truth be told, I have no connection to the deaf community, but just these last two years, they have immersed me into a community to help me better understand how disparities are deeper than what we think we see on a daily basis. Imagine trying to conduct business and you can't communicate with someone. That's why we're here today.
Well, perfect, so. He always has some man. He always doing some man.
I have great board members.
Michael came and said he still don't business. Alright, alright, Michael, come on.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
And we will go.
Alright, um, education scholarship, PNA? Name, address for the record?
My name is Eve Denne Brownlee Slaughter. Our facilities are located in four ninety-one East Macklemore.
East Macklemore.
Yes, sir.
What's your mama name?
My mama's name is Tonya Brownlee. My godmother was Lady Doris Thomas Hill. My godfather, the lady Alfred Dwayne Hill.
Alright, what's your funding request?
Uh, our funding request is twelve thousand dollars to cover, um, staff salaries for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Okay. Any other questions, y'all?
Reverend Dr. Alfred Dwayne Hill, senior.
That's why I asked, the family, you know, from Memphis.
I run their organization. I've been running the organization since two thousand seventeen. My godmother died in two thousand nineteen. My godfather, of course, died shortly after our founding in two thousand one. But for the last twenty-four years, we provided free tutoring, support to students in the city of Memphis, the Mid-South area. And because of the pandemic, we were able to reach students way down in Atlanta, Georgia. We have a hundred percent graduation rate for our students who come through our program. We're a generational organization by which we are tutoring students who are children of our former students. I said in my godmother's funeral, I don't think they knew their grandchildren would benefit from the program. But my son, who is now nine, was diagnosed as cognitively below average when he was two. He is a student of our program. He was accepted into Greenwood's optional school program. He's thrice exceptional and he reads on a four point eight grade level because of the work that our reading specialists and tutors provide. In addition to my own children benefiting, our T N R E results outperform the school district and the state, where seventy-five percent of our students who come through our program were successful on the T N R E assessment for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, as well as the previous school year. We also have fifty percent of our students who passed the T N R E for MA. All of our students now come from the Memphis City Shelby County Schools District and we offer a variety of services.
How many students?
Um, this year, we have fifteen students who are currently enrolled and we only started last week. We have requests from schools ranging from Frazier to Raleigh to support, um, their school efforts to raise up their T cap scores, students at Corner.
What's your capacity?
Our capacity is thirty-five.
Per, per school year?
Per school year.
How do you increase capacity?
Money to hire more staff.
But you're able to expand your curriculum?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And how do you get the thirty-five students that you have per year?
Um, word of mouth. We knock on doors, we go to schools. Our social media presence is huge. I share from my personal page as well as our ESPN Academy page. Um, the schools.
Are there any, do you have any direct partnerships with the Memphis, uh, Shelby County Schools?
Not at this time. Not at this time.
Are there plans to develop? Yeah. I actually absolutely am.
I know, I can, I can hear when people give themselves work.
I appreciate it. I sure will. And you met my son.
Really?
Yes. Um, he saw you on a billboard when you were running for DA and I put a post on Facebook and a dear friend of mine said, bring him to this place. And he still talks about you and meeting him.
Tell him I say hello.
See, look, she said, let me get these extra branding points while I can, look. Listen, if y'all don't know how to shoot y'all a shot, she showed y'all just now. But, but in all seriousness, we appreciate your work. Um, keep it up, keep it up. Thank you all.
Thank you for your time. I'll be reaching out via email and phone call. Call you. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Good afternoon. Uh, it has been. I know, we, we're gonna, we're, yeah, it's been about three years, about three years. Time flies. Well, the last four years all seem to have combined together, I think, a little bit for us. So, um, I'm Angie Johnson. I'm the Executive Director of Emmanuel Center and this is one of our board members.
I'm Frank Crump. I'm a volunteer board member of the Emmanuel Center.
He's just here for support.
Your name's Crump?
Yes.
Okay, our relation? So I just.
Great guy here volunteering.
So I just got to, you know, I just got to read the book. It's called From Boss Crump to King Will. It's an excellent read, by the way, read it. For being here, um, service, service, so.
Thank you for having us.
If, is everyone here familiar with Emmanuel Center? Are we familiar with Emmanuel Center? Councilwoman White, Cooper Sutton, we familiar with Emmanuel Center? Okay, go ahead. I was trying to see if everybody was familiar with Emmanuel Center.
I'll be real brief. So, we've been, um, for thirty-five years, we've been providing services to the South commu-, uh, South City community. And, um, we are here today to ask the city council to consider funding in the amount of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to help us build a new facility. We are located in the former.
Where's the new facility? Are you leaving South Memphis?
No, we are not. We are staying in the same. No, 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 no. That is our place. We have no interest in leaving. That's, this is, this is where our kids and our families are. So, Emmanuel Center is located in the former Clayborne Homes community, um, which I won't go into the poverty and the issues that, uh, these families face.
One two six, the zip code?
Three eight one two six, zip code, but we.
Poor zip code in state.
Correct. Um, I think it's number five right now in the nation. So, in addition, in the last several years, it seems like since pandemic kind of recovery, we have also seen huge amount of increased gang recruitment. I mean, Titan Boyd's right over there across, around the corner from us and we are at capacity. So, Emmanuel Center has two core programs. That is our after-school program and our summer camp program. Um, Emmanuel Center represents a place of, of safety and positivity where our kids receive homework help, literacy and math tutoring, social and emotional classes. We, um, incorporated those three years ago. Once a week, they receive an hour of social, emotional, uh, counseling and much more. We also are building our facilities, our used, um, community partners rely on us to use our facilities for complimentary programs.
So, how do the kids get to Emmanuel Center?
Right now, most of them are bussed into, you know, they live in the community or, and they bus in. We meet the buses from most of the schools.
How long do they stay? How long do they stay?
From three to six PM, Monday through Thursday.
About how many students do you all serve?
Right now, we have a hundred and forty-seven kids, uh, registered on any given day. We won't have a hundred and forty-seven. But we, we really, capacity-wise for us, for like, especially when we're in summer camp and we're in the classrooms and really in order to make a big impact is like seventy-five. That one building's very old.
So, from three to, yeah. It's pretty, it's pretty old. Still looks okay, but it's pretty old. So, from, from the, the time that they with you all, what do they do?
Uh, they come in, they have a meal. We go straight to homework help. Uh, we, right now, because of our lack of capacity and, um, classrooms, we cycle them in and out for homework. Cause some of them may get dropped off by a parent. We do have some kids that go to downtown. They may go into homework immediately. Some may start homework at four o'clock because they're getting off the bus from La Rose or walking in.
As it relates to the, uh, the funding request, how soon do y'all plan to start on the new?
So, our, our.
Is it renovation or is it knocking it down, doing it again?
It is partly knocking it down. The, what's considered the annex is gonna be knocked down. What's considered the chapel is gonna be repurposed into, um, a high school area for classrooms.
Is it expansion and renovation?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Um, and right now, we have a, uh, challenge match of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is part of a million dollar grant. So, once we complete that, which we're close to, then we'll have two million on this campaign.
So, okay, cool. Raise seven hundred and fifty, they give you an additional seven hundred and fifty?
Correct. Plus, they've are, dollar per dollar.
And does it count what the council gives as well?
Correct.
Say it again, customers.
Dollar per dollar.
So, for every dollar we give, there's a match?
If we don't get it, they don't match it.
Right. Um, and once that's completed, we'll have two million and then we'll be able to go more public with our campaign.
My last question, I'm trying to make sure we get all the questions answered for, for the council. Where, what area do the students come from? Are they, is it all South Memphis?
It's mainly South Memphis. So, we are serving, uh, South Memphis and, and where they live.
Okay.
Um, but we serve, you know, some of them may go to downtown, Central High School. We got BTW, um, Middle Land High, Soulsville, La Rose.
So, the reason one of these, really, so, I read way too much from time to time. So, I think it was about twenty fifteen, there was an article that was published that said that people who live in this particular community have a life expectancy of thirteen years fewer than some of the wealthier areas in town. When we talk about serious needs, um, in the city of Memphis, I don't think we can look any further than three eight one two six. The work they're doing is God sent. Like, we need people in our community actually reaching and touching people who just don't have. Whether it's parental guidance, whether it's resources, whether it's just mentorship, understanding there is, there's more to life. So, thank you for the work that you, I'm familiar with your work. And I'm gonna support you. I'm waiting on my invitation. Y'all haven't invited me back in a while.
JB, I'm gonna send it to you.
Look, I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward. Um, so, please support this. Please support this organization. Any other council members in the queue? I know I asked a lot of questions, so I wanna make sure everybody get information about this organization.
Oh, yes, sir. We already have. And I'm gonna send you an email too.
You didn't have to tell us that for more either.
Cause I was ready, I was ready. Absolutely.
Go big or go home.
Pleasure to meet you. Thank you, thank you for.
Thank you so much.
Who's name? Flyboss. Now, with that name, y'all gotta bring it.
We do have a copy.
Alright, when you sit down, name and address for the record. Tell me the funding request and talk me through it.
Good evening.
Ooh, Jesus scared me.
Good evening. Name and address for the record?
My name is Livia Coleman. Uh, address six thousand Poplar, uh, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one nine.
There's a gentleman beside you.
I'm Chris Coleman. This is actually my wife. I'm a VP of Flyboss Inc.
Okay, cool. So, uh, what's your funding request? Give me straight to it.
Alright, so our funding request is fifteen thousand dollars and it is for a teen financial master classes, a series of teen master classes. Um, we do believe that the education for the youth starts early. So, our mission for Flyboss Inc. is to provide, uh, financial education and support, uh, to the underserved. We do believe that, uh, credit plays a big factor in that. Um, and what we do find, find, specifically, we're asking for representation from the city of Memphis, uh, for a portion of this because we do understand that our youth is entering into the society lacking the basic skills like, uh, credit education and financial literacy. Uh, financial literacy is one that they're not getting at home. And so, we do believe that by empowering them and providing skills in the areas of budgeting, credit education, uh, even home buying, that these children will be able to make better decisions. Um, also, one of these, one of the things that we found by doing the financial master classes so far is that when they don't get this information, they are, uh, more prone to making, um, I wouldn't say bad, bad decisions, but they're falling victim of it and it eventually affects their housing and, uh, the jobs that they get. Their credit scores are tied to this. So, our gap is that we, we have hosted these master classes in hopes that it will bridge the gap. Uh, Memphis, uh, our credit scores are one of the lowest, um, in the country. Uh, and so, uh, we do believe that these programs is just a seed, um, for the other things that we would like to do for the, the, uh, the families.
So, one of the things, I went to ask, uh, councilman Ford a question. So, one of the things, I went to ask Councilman Ford a question, um... So, Council, well, not Councilman Ford. Ford Junior, he does financial, his son, does financial literacy for the city of Memphis, so I think there may be an opportunity for you all to, uh, partner with, uh, Ford Junior. I know Councilman Ford Senior's gonna get information to you, or his staff will get information to you for Ford Junior in terms of partnership. I think your funding request is fifteen thousand. I guess it gives you the ability to scale up and touch more people.
Correct, and then also, we can do more, uh, financial, uh, master classes, possibly one per, um, quarter, and then also, we would love to be able to expand to other things. So, because these kids are not able to be empowered in their homes, we are intending to have family master classes that would then affect the parents as well, cause most of the children, they're hearing this information for the first time when they're coming into these financial master classes.
All right. Uh, appears all hearts and minds good. Thank you all so much. Keep reaching out to the council in three weeks or so. Hopefully, we have all allocations in, unless people bring resolutions and keep opening the window. Hopefully, no more resolutions come, and the window closed. All right, all right, thank you all, good job. And first of all, I just love seeing a couple together, doing work together, so kudos to y'all.
And that last group that was dressed up, I was a benefit of that.
So you was a part of me?
Literally, like, I had run home from school, and that was my getaway. That, that community center was major in my life, like, major in my life, serious. I never thought about how they kept it up. Like, how do they keep that up? I never thought about that. Never thought about it.
So, we're gonna let Councilman Ford does his business, but next is Ford Memphis? See, they ready. All right, I'mma, I'mma get straight to the, to the, to the, uh, to meat and potatoes in a second. When we get those passed out? All right. Any relation to Ken Moody or Marcus Moody?
No, no relation, I know him, I know them.
You know Ken and Marcus, all right, all right. I think all council members have. Uh, what's your funding request, and tell us how the funding request will be used?
Travis Moody, Ford Memphis, uh, two fifty-five North Highland, three-eight-one-one-one.
Is that you, Spinoza?
So, uh, and, I'll jump right to it, in, in twenty-twenty, the C- City Council signed a resolution to end predatory lending in Memphis.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
So, uh, so this is Ford Memphis is a, uh... It was before you, so I'll, I'll explain what, what predatory lending is, for those who, okay. Oh, seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand dollars, I think, so that was Martavia's councilman. I know you probably listen, my bad, Jones, Chairman Jones, uh, one of his big things.
Yes, well, ev- everybody on the City Council has signed it, so it was a big thing. Everybody recognized that predatory lending is bad for Memphis. And so, what Ford Memphis is, this is a, a practical way to make that resolution reality. So what we do is, we provide emergency financial assistance, uh, to people who in need. Working people in Memphis who have a need. So for those who, who aren't familiar with payday lending, so in, in the state of Tennessee, predatory lending can charge up to four-hundred-and-fifty-nine percent interest. So that means if you borrow a thousand dollars over a year, you'll pay almost forty-five-hundred dollars back. So what we do is provide a, a real creative solution. We've, uh, we've worked with local banks and companies and churches and nonprofit organizations to create a collaboration, where we can provide lending, uh, up to, at ten percent regardless on the credit score, up to twenty-five-hundred dollars, and a grant up to twenty-five-hundred dollars for people in need. So the people who contact us are people being evicted, cars being repossessed, lights being cut off, and, uh, we provide a, a assist, assistance. So what makes us unique is that we don't just give people money. We, uh, we create sustainable solutions. Uh, so, for, most of the people come to us, they're working, they're teachers, they're nurses, and, and so they have jobs. But if they come to us, they're, they're, they make four thousand.
Question, um, so, I understand, you know, predatory lending, basically, I go in, give you a thousand, they gonna... The interest rate's gonna be through...
Yes.
How do you all fit into that? So if I come in, say, "Look, I need a thousand dollars right now, my car's in the shop, and I need it back so I can make it to work." Walk me through that.
So, we'll, we'll sign a coach, we respond within twenty-four hours. And again, most of the, we're like the emergency room. So, you know, people like the, the group that was here before, they're, they're in financial literacy, but it's typically a longer process. People come to us, they need money within days, not months. And so, what we do is, we'll sign a coach, we'll did, we get all of their pay stubs, their bank statements, and we come up with a plan to say, "Yes, if we provide this assistance, they will be okay." And if they are, and sometimes, we, we always require what we call skin in the game. Uh, it could be cutting out cable, cutting out streaming, downsizing a car, anything that can get them to a sustainable plan.
Give me, give me to what happens. "I need a thousand dollars, walk me through it."
So within, we could typically provide a thousand dollars within forty-eight hours.
So, so, so provide a thousand dollars within forty-eight hours, so what do they pay you back?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yes, so if somebody borrowed, let's say, the most we do is twenty-five-hundred. So they're...
How soon, how long they have to pay?
Up to twenty-four, twenty-four hours. Twenty-four, um, months. Yeah, so two years. So if a person borrows, um, twenty-five-hundred, they're paying a hundred-and-fourteen dollars a month for two years. But if they were paying a payday loan, they would be paying three-hundred-and-forty dollars every two weeks.
Basically, this is a really good deal, it's a really good program.
So we're able to do this, we've partnered with banks like First Horizon, and all churches like Second Pres and, yeah.
How, how do people learn about you? Cause you know, I know people going to, you know, the pawn shops, pawn the things that they really, there's really value in them cause they, uh, in desperate need of capital, how do they find out about your organization? How do you get their word out?
So we market through social media, and, but our biggest, uh, marketing tool is through churches and, and other nonprofit organizations. So we, basically, churches like New Direction, they're outsourcing their benevolence to us. So if somebody goes to pursue a God and say, "I need a thousand dollars," they're sending them to us versus the church. And so we're, we, we say that this is a way to scale up and really serve all of Memphis through United Way, through churches, through nonprofit organizations, cause they're really not equipped to assess. The, the, the emergency room, uh, assessment, they're not really equipped, so they're set...
So how many people you have on staff?
We have two full-time, the two of us, we have five part-time money coaches, and, uh, a part-time admin.
So if I come in, am I assigned a money coach to help me manage, I don't ever end back in that situation again?
Yes.
All right, then my next question, I'm, I'm trying to move fast, I'm trying to figure out a few things. My next question, how do y'all raise y'all funds?
So, so far, we've been through private, through companies like First Horizon, through grants, through Assisi, and, uh, Hope Foundation, and, uh, church foundations like Second Pres. So we've raised, last year, we raised six-hundred and eleven thousand. And so, uh, but now, this is first time we've partnered... Through lo- our local government. Cause this is something that everybody can get behind. We hadn't been turned down yet by anybody.
You may, so although Chairman Jones is not on the council, you may wanna reach out to Chairman Jones. Um, he, this would make him extremely excited, and he would be a really good ambassador. People still listen to him. I may take his call now, every now and then, uh, I don't know. Um, I'mma let Councilman Ford just do his plug real quick, where do I need to go?
Yes, so we are, we've already connected with, uh, Charlie K as well, we're, we've applied for across the street.
Good job.
And we partnered with Greater Memphis Financial Empowerment Center, with Shelby County. They're, they're really a good source for us, cause we're, we're short-term, again, we're the emergency room. When we get through them and get them sus- you know, where they can live, we pass them off to Greater Memphis, who, who does long-term coaching.
Well, thank you, um, I think this is, this is the type of program that, uh, Chairman Jones was talking about, and all the council members signed it, and it's hard to get all of us to sign one thing.
Yes.
And I really have it too much, um, so kudos to the work that you do. Um, congratulations, keep, keep going forth and then supporting the people who need it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
He's actually been a great partner for us, yep. Thank you. Yes, junior.
Let's do it. Friends for Life. I wish so far behind, this is great. All right, name and address for the record, um, tell me the funding request, and how you gonna use our money?
Okay, got you.
Name and address, go ahead.
Got you. Diane Duke, uh, one sixteen South Front Street, Memphis.
Amazing last name, go ahead.
Mia Cotton, same address, Chief Programs Officer. So, if you go to the back page, I did the, what you need to get from this presentation. I had this beautiful pres- flowery presentation, but I understand we've got time commitments, so... Um, what is important for everyone to understand is Memphis is second in the nation of new transmissions of HIV. Our city is number two. So, um, we've been working with our coalition partners really, really hard for many, many years, and here we are still second. So, we had to take a step back and look at why is Memphis second? Well, it's, it's all of the social ills that we have, I mean, it's poverty, it's food insecurity, housing insecurity, so it's the social determinants of health. I've got a little handout in there for you about that. And so, you know, you have to ask, are you hungry? Do you have a house, or, do you have a house? You know, do you know that people care about you? Can, can you get to them? Do you have health insurance? Do you have a job? All of these things are things that really impact people's health. So, twenty percent is whether or not you have access to healthcare. Eighty percent is what's happening with the rest of you. And so, we're taking a step back to look at that. We're asking for fifty thousand dollars, cause we need to talk, we need to support, um, some of the parts of our housing department, and also...
Cause you tell us a little bit about your housing department?
I'll let you know.
Okay, Ms. Cotton?
Um, so, in our housing department, we have long-term and short-term assistance. So our short-term program, we can provide rent, mortgage, and utility assistance for individuals who qualify on the short-term side for emergency, as well as hotel stays. On the permanent housing side, we have two arms of our program. We have T-Bro, which is tenant-based rental assistance, traditional old section eight, you qualify, we pay the seventy. Um, our other arm is for our homeless population who can't qualify, it's called scattered sites. We rent the units, and then we sublet to those individuals who would have barriers in the community. That's the program that we need the, a support on the funding on.
All right, so I think, I, I think there may be, uh, a way to do this differently. Um, so we're gonna connect you all with HCD sooner rather than later, but keep talking. But I just had to make the note, so I won't forget.
Okay, so yeah, so we have those two arms of our housing program, and so for our housing folks, um, we are looking for support, because we have to do a model called Housing First. So we get people straight off the street who are not used to being indoors. And when you're not used to being inside, caring for a home, we get a lot of damages to the property. And so, we have to convince landlords to rent to us, and in order for them to rent to us, we promise that we will make sure the unit stays intact, and then we sublet to the individual who couldn't qualify on their own. Where we have barriers at is the repairs and the damages that can happen to a unit while you're working with people to get them indoors. Because Housing First means, I don't deal with any of your other stuff, I just get you indoors, and then case management work on it later.
Couple questions for you, um, how many people do you all house?
So, in our permanent housing program, we have, we have the capacity for about seventy to seventy-five in our T-Bro program, which is traditional section eight, and then we can take up to about sixty with the funding we have in our scattered sites.
Y'all get any mo- funding from the city of Memphis itself?
Yes, city, the city hu- uh, c- uh, city funds us, as well as Shelby County, and direct funds from HUD.
How much, how much money do you get from, I'm assuming your funding comes from HCD? How much money you get from HCD?
So our HCD grant is T-Bro, that one's around six-hundred and something thousand, it's like six-hundred, six-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Okay, I don't...
Yeah, six-hundred-and-twenty, yeah.
Six-hundred-and-twenty, okay.
But those funds do not cover the damages. So that's where we get hit as a nonprofit, all the damages that we, that go into those programs.
So that we could keep the units for the clients. That comes out of our unrestricted funding, that's really hard to support.
And the other piece of this is, as we've reached out to, um, look at the social drivers of health, and a little bit, we're focusing on people who are high-risk of contracting HIV, so those are HIV-negative people, and some of our funds that we get to support the food pantry do not support HIV.
Is, is the food pantry located on-site?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, let's all...
And so this year, just as, as an example, this year, we brought in, there were, what was it, what's the number, forty?
Forty-nine percent.
Forty-nine percent, yeah, we had, in six months, we brought ninety-eight people came to the food pantry. We found out they were HIV-positive. And so we were able to get them into health, into care, and the sooner you get somebody into care, the sooner their viral load is under control, and if that happens, they can test negative and they can't transmit the infection. So it's really, uh, you know, we're, we're doing treatment as prevention as well.
One last question for me, where are y'all located again?
Fifteen forty-eight...
Brand-new building.
Fifteen, where?
Forty-eight Poplar, right there, across from like Home Depot.
It used to be the Leadership Foundation.
I know exactly where you are now, okay. All right, well, um, thank you all for the work. Consistently reach out to this body over the next several weeks. Um, and I'mma pretend to be Councilman Ford today. Go across the street.
We already, we've already got that.
Y'all already got that? All right, come on, Cooper Sutton.
Yeah, um, you're a foundation Friends for Life, I've worked very closely with you all with Donna Black, Donna, Donna, is she still, is she still there?
Donna's at Hope House, so we still work with Donna, but she works through Hope House.
She, she still works through Hope House?
Yes.
And I know that your HIV funding was cut off, am I correct?
Oh, yes.
We know why. You ain't gotta talk about it, I knew enough to talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work and awesome work you did, I was on the streets with Donna for a while.
Love it.
HIV, so it's an epidemic, and I hate that the Memphis city is good. And to teach our children sexual education, thank you.
Thank you. What you got, come on?
Not gonna cut up today.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Generous Life Foundation, keeping me on track today, cause we got some people in the state who just don't want people to get help here. Let's, I'm just leave it alone. All right, cut up another day. Generous Life Foundation's going once, okay, line through it. Getting Families Together. Should I take everybody's? All right, name, everybody got it? All right, name and address for the record, tell us what the funding request is, talk, talk us through how you gonna use the funds, and at some point, I'm gonna interrupt and start asking a couple questions. Hopefully enough questions, so the other council members know exactly about your program, go ahead.
My name is Debbie Holden, uh, and I'm, we're located...
Nice blazer.
Thank you. Nine oh-five East Shelby Drive, uh, three-eight-one-one-six.
White Haven, I per.
You wanna introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Willie Holden, I'm husband. I don't speak much, but I'm just here to support.
You know, we, we love it, we love it, we love it.
And we're asking for, uh, twelve thousand.
All right, talk me through it, the twelve thousand dollar request, it looks like it's core program and advanced workshops.
It is. Uh, a lot of our kids are not graduating, and if they are graduating, they're not going to college. And if they go to college, the first year or two, they're out of college because they don't have enough funding. They don't have enough money for books, or for housing, or for anything that's needed, food. Um, and greater, well, Getting Families Together, which is under the Greater Faith umbrella, we provide...
Associated with a church in particular?
It is.
What church?
Greater Faith Tabernacle Ministries, under the leadership of Dr. Orlaster Jones, right next to the Health and Shelby Park.
You better talk about it, act like you go to church a little bit.
We will.
We have, for the past few years, um, had scholarship classes, uh, prep classes, not just for kids going to college, but kids that are also going to a trade school. We just understand that, that education is important, and if we equip them with what they need, then they can come back and work and be productive citizens in Memphis. Um, we have, uh, a nurse practitioner that came from a broken home, a single-parent home. But we send her stuff every quarter, so that she didn't miss home. We called her, sent her videos, um, took food, did community visits to the college that she was at, just so that she could keep her hopes up high. And we do that for every, every kid that comes through our program, whether they belong to Greater Faith, Getting Families Together, or just in the White Haven community. Um, right now, we funded a hundred-and-fourteen students successfully through college. Y'all supposed to be asking some questions. We have Danny Cannon Jr., who's the Operation Manager for, um, Walmart. Um, Danny came through the program. We want every one of, I don't care if it's your kids or my kids, I used to work for, for juvenile court. I retired to, to help do this. Um, I know the importance of education, being able to read, being able to have what you need. We do community service with them, we make sure they... We make sure they give back to the community. When every kid leaves going to college, we give them a care pack. When they're there for their midterms, we send them a care pack. If they can't get home from college, we send somebody to get them and bring them back home. We just want them to know that even when you're away, or even if you're still at home, somebody cares and we got your back.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Your organization is geared to these kids that are really wanting to go to college. Is this what you're saying?
Well, all of them don't go to college. Some of them won't, yeah, yes ma'am. A higher education or higher learning experience. Some of them go to trade schools, some of them, even if they go to job school. We still monitor and track them while they're there.
So $12,000, this is all you need for this factual year?
For this factual year.
So how do you sustain through the rest of, what's sustainability?
I'm a professional beggar. And I do mean that literally. I get on the phone and call people that I know. I call, my husband works for UPS. I call those drivers and ask for $100. I got a connection with Amazon. I asked them for 500 backpacks. I am a professional beggar by God. And we get our babies whatever they need to make sure they're successful and they're not. I had a kid to call me this weekend who was stuck in Oklahoma, who needed transportation to get back home. Do you think he didn't get back home? You call me and make sure you get back, and I contact his momma to put the, connect the dots together.
What does it look like to run your organization? Just to, just to, you know, everybody's similar, but what does it look like to run an organization to be sustainable? And you really don't have to be, by God, thank you, a professional beggar. But sustainability, what does it, what does it look like to run your organization?
We meet with our youth. And, and it does not have to be a youth that attends our church. We meet with those youth every single month. We do something with them every single month.
I need to know the dollar amount of sustain. If you can't get it to me right now, I want you to pray about it, think about it. I need to know what it is that's gonna sustain your company, sustain this organization that you're doing so well. You want to be a professional beggar. You know this is sustainable. This is gonna come in, this is how we can operate, and this is what, you understand what I'm saying? I got you.
So please follow up on that and we'll continue those conversations. And we want to ask, excuse me. We're so far behind. And we wish we could have this conversation on and on and on. But we want to encourage you to reach out to all the council members and we look forward to supporting your work. And thank you for coming in. We will now have Global Children's Services. Thank you so much for coming in today. If you will please give us your name and address for the record, and you may proceed.
Good afternoon, my name is Todd.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
My name is Todd Harris. I'm here with my wife, Daphne Booker Harris, Dr. Daphne Booker Harris. Global Children's Services is located at 5235 Martin Edwards Place in Memphis, Tennessee, 38116.
Thank you.
I'm Daphne Booker Harris, and we're with Global Children's Services at 5235 Martin Edwards and the heart of Whitehaven.
All right, Whitehaven. If you would just give us an overview of your organization and then tell us about your budget.
Sure. Global Children's Services is a nonprofit childcare service provider here. We operate six locations over, throughout the city. We service on a daily basis around 1,100 children. And then, of course, with that comes the families. So we touch somewhere in the neighborhood of about 2,500 families on a daily basis. We are asking for a $1 million allotment to deploy a wraparound program that we've been working on. And that wraparound program will cover the operational and administrative costs for the program. My wife will give a better understanding of what the program entails.
All right, tell us about your program.
All right, so our programs, we have a variety of programs. But one of the programs I really want to highlight is our ACT Bootcamp, where we cater to schoolagers. Our school age program, we go into the school system and we assist students. We're increasing their ACT scores so they can get in colleges. We were with the Shelby County School and we were funded through a separate entity. And during the pandemic, the, the fund ceased. And so that program, we no longer have funding for that program. And in that program, we had about 2,000 students across Memphis in those programs associated with the school district. And we don't have the funding for that program anymore for the ACT Bootcamp. That's one of the wraparound services that we have. Also just offering financial literacy to our youth is one of the programs we offer in our overall wraparound services. And we're just looking for funding to support all of the services that we have. We do have services that we offer for sign language, where they come in on Saturdays for the family and teach them sign language for the students and the overall families. And those programs are free to the community. And so a lot of our funding for those programs has been coming from business to business and small micro grants that we've been putting in. And so we're trying to expand because we can accept more students then because of funding purposes.
Tell us about your food program.
Our food program, we have a food distribution center where we serve 2,400 children in apartment complexes throughout the city a day. And then we also have where they can come, other parents can come and receive food if they don't have food in their, in their houses. Also, we have diaper, free diapers to go along with that as well, that goes along with the food bank.
All right, well, we thank you for coming in and we encourage you to reach out. Yes?
Yes, I will be supporting them. They are not just in Whitehaven, but they are in other areas of the city doing this work. And could you briefly mention the other areas or the, or the zip codes?
Yeah, so we're in 38115 Hickory Hill, we're in Big Hampton, 38111. We're in North Memphis Uptown, I call it Smoky City, 38107. We're also in South Memphis, 38106, right there at Elvis Presley and Gosco. So we have, like I said, six locations across the city doing high-impact work.
Thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you, another power couple in the house.
All right, all right, thank you for coming.
Be blessed, thank you.
All right, we will now have Golden Institute. Good afternoon. All right. If you'll give us your name and address for the record, and you may proceed.
D'Amico Atkins, 3184 Overbrook Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 38128.
All right. If you could tell us, what are you most proud of with your program?
The, the service that we're giving back to the young kids, making sure that they're able to go out into the world, the job market, and be productive for themselves. We offer what I call hard label, hand label. We offer landscaping, plumbing work, AC work. We got mentors that come through that help us mentor the kids and give them a, a way of going about earning a dollar without having to go, go into anything else. We also offer the kids, especially young men, how can I say this? A way to be able to behave and dress, like dress for success and things like that. So we, we get them ways out of the, the, the hard times that they have been going through the streets. Thank you, thank you.
What, what age group are you working with?
Uh, we started, we started off at 16 on up, like this young man here, he's a former student. He started at 16, he's now about, what's he, about 19 now? 20 now.
I'd like to hear from him, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell us your name and the address.
Okay, I'm Jerry Lee, oh, I'm Jerry Lee. It's the same address, Overbrook Road.
Okay. How did this program help you?
Oh, it helped me a lot. I came when I was young, I think I was 15. I was still in like a 11th grade, I believe. Yeah, it helped me a lot, just like to grow my overall character and all that.
What skills have you learned?
Um, uh, like mainly do landscaping, like cutting grass and all this stuff like that.
What kind of landscaping?
What you mean, like what do you mean?
What do you do? You cut the bushes, you cut the trees?
Oh, 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 my bad, my bad, excuse me, yes, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Yeah, we do pretty much all the like, according to landscaping, like yeah, cutting trees, like laying stones, laying grass. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Oh, that is.
I can lay some stone.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I don't want to make it sound like, but yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Well, we're always excited to see programs that are giving young people opportunities to train and be able to have resources to take care of themselves and be productive citizens. We also encourage you to reach out to the council people. You do landscaping, all that good stuff. It would be good to show some before-after pictures, to show some of the talent that you have.
Yes, ma'am, we'll be more prepared next time. This time was kind of on the fly.
You did, you did fantastic. You did fantastic.
Yes, ma'am.
Your ask is $10,000?
15, 15,000, yes, ma'am.
Okay, y'all heard that, $15,000. All right, well, thank you so much for coming in, we appreciate you. That's right. Gracefully Empowering Mental Health, please come up.
Thank you.
I'll take a green one, please. Green's my favorite color. Councilwoman Cooper Sutton?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Give his telephone number right quick.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Wait a minute, you let him leave? You already got it? Young man, come back and give your telephone number, please. All right, thank you so much for coming in. If you will please give us your name and address for the record, and you may proceed.
Thank you. My name is Delphine Bond, address 3223 Boone Street, Memphis, Tennessee, 38127. And I am here to represent GMS, Gracefully Empowering Mental Health and Society. We are a mental health support group that provides comprehensive life skills and tangible resources for those constrained by poverty and mental health challenges. Our mission is to cultivate the secure environment where they can have the candid discussions, not only the folks dealing with the mental health, but their family members and their friends. Because oftentimes, those are burdens that other people take on. We were founded as a C, 501(c)(3) and 422. We are mainly bootstrapped. We have gotten a couple of grants from different places. And we have mostly been with private donors. We're requesting 15,000 for planning and admin, overhead logistics, transportation, emergency shelter, and our ACEs groups with the group planning and the event and community coordination. This summer, we held a summer camp where our basis was literacy and behaviors. From ages five to 12 years old, we had 35 students to come. And we've finally got report cards from the children and everybody was so excited about how well the behaviors had come up this year. During the summer camp program, the children did get a chance to write a book at Camp Worthy. I did not get a chance to bring a copy with us, but that actually given them the opportunity to see the betterment in their behaviors and what all they could do. And, you know, help stabilize their mental. Those are mostly the children that attended were children who suffer from ACEs. And that's one of our biggest issues, biggest issues with children and their behaviors.
Thank you, Chairman. I saw that, that I dealt with the ACE program, I was part of that. And it's a very, very important survey that we give, but not only for the children, but for the adults.
Yes.
And so is this how you determine how your children are, are in your program with the ACEs program? With the ACEs survey?
Actually, it's not, the program's not actually just for the children. We have a teen program and we have the parents program. A lot of times dealing with the children who deal with parents who have mental issues. And so we have, we offer transportation and so, job saves, the soft skills. So many people go into work and don't have soft skill training. And you get a lot of rebuttal in basic places. So the, the training, resume writing, job search, college degree, college, college search, and just the basics of being able to have a sustainable life.
There we go, because I should have given it access. I'm back.
Yes, it's for planning and admin, overhead logistics, and transportation. We were also, we had a van from Tennessee Vans, but to actually be able to put the van, van in motion.
So the van is out of service?
No, it's in service, we're trying to purchase it.
Purchase it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You should, you should took me straight, I need to know.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay. And Councilwoman Miss Warren from Washington, since I'm, since she took over from me. What she said, what she wants to know is, what's your, what's your most proud of?
I'm most proud of the children going through the literacy program and writing the book. It's at Camp Worthy, they're all, their names are all in it for being co-authors. And they got a chance to, you know, have a book with, with their pictures on the front of it. So it was really, it was really nice.
Your funding request, 15?
15,000.
Okay, all right, well, Councilman Ford?
I wasn't gonna say nothing, but I noticed this lady right here, she's a very hard-working person. She was born to help others. Just to be honest. Thank you. That's what she do, okay? She finally got her an organization, nonprofit, and she's gonna keep on growing and growing and growing because that's the only thing that she know how to do is to help others. And I'm not gonna say who all, but I could name some, I mean, all y'all know these people. But hey, but if you can help her, please help her with the 15,000. I will.
Says a lot, because Councilman Ford's been quiet today. Says like he speaks on your behalf, so look forward to supporting you, keep doing the good work.
Thank you so much.
All right, who's next? Y'all know I don't know. Who's next? Greater Memphis Media. I mean, you, you got some big shoes to fill. Got some real big shoes to fill. Name and address for the record. I'm gonna ask you, what's the funding request? And what are you gonna use the funds for? And then now, I'm gonna ask you, what's your, what's your most proud of? Go ahead.
Okay.
And then, you know, you gotta shout out the man.
Oh, yes, uh.
Gotta shout out the man.
Uh, yes, this is all to Brian Clay. He is the founder of this, Greater Memphis Media. And of course, everyone knows he had a passing this year. And he will be duly missed, he will. Yes, absolutely. My name is Harvey Peterson Jr. And address 43 Muddy River Lane, South, number 1238106. And Greater Memphis Media Incorporated is designed to elevate and inform the Greater Memphis community on social justice issues and eradicate illiteracy through positive interventions and support programs for our youngest scholars, under deserved, and our disadvantaged college students. Our slogan, intelligent information and ideas for today's urban intellectual, is a continuous reminder that our organization is committed to inform citizens about various social justice issues and provide our HBC students in Memphis a path of competing and being an effective and organization of social progress and using 21st century mythologies. We are a 501(c)(3). Uh, we are a five-oh-one-three-C nonpartisan social media company that believes in the power of the human spirit. Uh, working with the undergrad students that come from disadvantaged backgrounds and assisting them to reach personal goals and ambitions. Uh, the Greater Memphis Media staff and its board are committed to that group in the term to spread the legacy.
So, I have one question, and then I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Swearingen. So, who's gonna do the programming since, you know, Mr. Clay's, uh, passing?
Uh, uh, because Mr. Clay has passed, uh, we wanna keep that legacy going on. So, we will be, uh, revolving around myself and others, uh, conducting those on the show.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, Councilwoman, what's your question? Okay.
I just wanna say that I know Mr. Peterson, and he worked very hard with, uh, Brian Clay. And I know that this organization, um, supports literacy and gives libraries to the students at, uh, Douglas Elementary School. And it also, uh, gives the students at Lemoine, the communications and journalism students opportunities to work behind the scenes, to have, to, to be in the field. And to actually participate in interviewing people and giving them, um, real-world and real-time experience. So, I'm excited to be able to continue to support this organization, and I ask my colleagues to support as well.
I'm just excited to see the organization continue, um, yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, um, I believe it was the last or the next to the last taping that I, along with Councilwoman Swearingen Washington and Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, were there for the taping, and we were able to, um, take a picture with Mr. Clay, I've known him for, had known him for many, many years, and my question is, uh, will you all continue in that same studio, or are you looking for a new location?
Uh, presently, we're in that same studio, but we are looking for a new location, uh, another site also.
Okay, let me get your number when you head out today, thank you, are you on the floor?
Okay, alright, council members, appears all hearts and minds, thank you so much, thank you for continuing that legacy. Habitat for Humanity. You, you know the routine? You know the routine, I don't see a presentation, there we go. Just get me. Okay, there's a lot of money out here. Funding request, talk me through it.
Alright, uh, Zach Amos, uh, address seven-one-three-six Winchester Road.
Zach is not new here.
Zach is not new here.
He's not new here, I think he lives here, at this point, go ahead.
Uh, funding request is a, is one hundred thousand dollars for, uh, our homebuyer team, uh, staff salaries, as well as our homebuyer education program. Um, a lot of city council members know that, uh, about our zero percent interest mortgages is how we make our, uh, homeowner- homeownership opportunities affordable, uh, for our homebuyers. The way that we keep those folks in their home, though, is through this homebuyer education course. It is, it would be unfair for us to get these folks, uh, into a home and just plop them in and say, "Good luck, have at it." We spend thirteen weeks with our homebuyers, teaching them about financial management, we get them to a place where they can save for a down payment. We talk to them about different ways to be a good neighbor, we talk to them about SEPTED techniques to keep their communities safe. We also, uh, give them a civics lesson, where we talk to them about how to register to vote, who their local representatives are, um, and what branches of government do what things.
I mean, we could do the head cross. 'Cause, you know, a lot of folks, you know, yell at us, and I'd be like, it's the folks on the side of the street.
And we just wanna make sure that they're not yelling at you.
Absolutely, you know, I'm all for that. So, you know, how many people do you all serve?
Um, we did thirty families.
With this particular program?
With this, thirty families.
Thirty families?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, and then, did y'all receive any funding from the city of Memphis?
We got funding from H C D.
A C D City, how much?
I think it was one point six, I wanna say, one point six million.
So, affordable.
And that was all for, for the construction, this would be just for the homebuyer program, so.
I think that's, uh, something that we can draw a distinction between council members. Uh, and then, 'cause Councilwoman Swearingen Washington wanted me to keep asking the question, what are you most proud of?
I am most proud of at our homebuyer, um, dedication ceremonies, when we actually dedicate the homes. Uh, seeing the children of our homebuyers. One story, it was my first home, uh, dedication ceremony, where, um, a, a single mom had just bought, uh, her first home, and one of her daughters, this little seven-year-old girl, our staff asked, "Oh, well, do you all have anything that you wanna say?", as somewhat jokingly. And the seven-year-old little girl said, she runs up to the microphone and she goes, "When I grow up, I wanna buy a house and have a bunch of babies." And, you know, at that point, for me, that was my habitat moment of realizing, we're not just building a house for a family right now, we're building dreams for kids in the future. Um, to make homeownership an opportunity, um, that benefits the whole community for generations to come.
Okay. What is it?
How much money did you say you got from her?
From?
A C D.
About one point six, I believe.
Okay, which came from us? Okay, you know, every year, we, we put that money in there and let y'all helm things for us. How many houses have y'all done this year?
Thirty.
Just thirty, okay. Alright, I need y'all to do more. Well, I'm kinda a little upset with you all, okay? Because I have a lot of people in which some of your employees kinda talk ugly to the older elderly people, don't like that. Okay, and we put this money aside, the council did now, to go and help. We just put it in yours hand to manage, and we've been kinda disappointed. And then the amounts of money, "Well, I can't fix this, I can't do this, and we're not gonna..." And then y'all, it's been very ugly, you know? And I don't like nobody to talk ugly to elderly people, and I don't like them to talk that to young folk either. But these elderly people, you, you get to your group and tell them they best be nice, 'cause I don't really wanna hear it anymore, because we might pull that money, okay?
Understood.
And give it to one of these other organizations that's going to do it. Thirty houses and didn't spend no money, you know, Habitat all over, okay, not just here in Memphis, okay? But I've been very, very disappointed, okay? I got a lady that's ninety-something years old, been trying to get y'all to just build her a ramp. And nobody been there, okay? That's kinda upsetting, okay? Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just talking, you don't have to answer, but I'm just telling you about that and the money that we've given, okay? And we did that hoping that you all would do right by people, but really hadn't, okay? And I just had to say that because we having those issues, but that money came from the, from the council, we put it in H C D.
So, so, to, to Councilman Ford's point, we know you're here, so you hear, sometimes you hear some of the frustrations that council members have, because a, a lot of times, they won't call you all, we, we receive the calls. So, my question for you is, after hearing that feedback, could you do the council a solid and make sure that the folks who aren't in, uh, in charge of the responsives, the folks who hear complaints, um, a- address how they interact with people, period? That's my question. Go ahead, go ahead.
And I just wanna ask.
I just answered the question, go ahead, go ahead, Zach.
Absolutely, um, yeah.
I know, I just need to know and ask, um, Councilman Ford, is I echo exactly what you said um, about they're not receiving and being treated and talking too ugly. But when we give, when the city give you this money, this is my first grant, and we give you this money, Chairman and you all seniors, your veterans that are on here, do you all ask for details sometime on how this money is spent? Or we just give it to them and we have no?
So, what, what, what happens is, when we allocate funding particularly to, um, A C D for affordable housing, et cetera, director cash comes in and kinda walks us through when the money's allocated and to what particular organization it's been allocated to. And if a council member asks a follow-up question, she will come in and, and walk us through the same, it was the same way when Mayor Young was Director Young, so. I mean, that's fair, that's fair, we can, we can put that on the, on the agenda as well. Alright, so, uh, go ahead.
I know that in, um, I have some constituents that have challenges getting through the line. When you all open it up, one person said they have like six or seven people calling for like one person to try to get them, get them through the line.
Our, our Aging in Place program absolutely serves a tremendous need. I think our Aging in Place program dovetails really nicely with the city's program that has a low-interest loan for seniors, um, for critical home repairs. I think that program serves thirty to fifty percent A M I, and we serve zero to thirty percent A M I. So, these services are free at no cost to the seniors involved. Um, I believe in May, when we had one of our open call periods, we had so many, um, phone calls coming in. Um, our internet provider, uh, shut us down because they thought that we were suffering from a denial of direct service.
So, so, essentially what they're doing is they serve a, you know, there's, there's a lot of, um, conversation about, you know, the need for affordable housing in the city of Memphis, they're, they're in a space where they're serving a real need. The, the, the issue that they're having, and I don't, you know, people just know, I'm gonna tell you what I think, and you be mad at me, I really won't care. But, um, the issue that they have is, they're almost in a space by themselves, so if they're in a space by themselves, they're subjected to all the calls. And, and they had, they had to have a capacity, the capacity to scale up, if they don't have the capacity to scale up, what you have is hundreds and hundreds of people calling. So, I mean, that's, that's an issue we have to address as a city, we can't just be mad at them. Because a lot of times, when we see with every organization that comes before us, there's always a capacity issue, there's always an issue of the ability to scale up, you can't really be mad at people for saying, "Hey, we're doing the best we can." But sometimes, the best you can, when you're talking about you maybe the only person in the field, just won't be enough to address, you know, the, the, the vast need, and I think what we have to find a way to do is, maybe we need another, uh, Habitat for Humanity. Because they just can't do it by themselves, so. It's just, it's just areas of opportunity in the city of Memphis that we, we always have to find ways to address, so. We're not mad at you, you know, we're not mad at you, we understand that you're doing the work. Um, it's just trying to find ways to, to, to support you and support other entities that are also in that space as well, so. I look forward to supporting you, continue to support you, um, look forward to, you know, um, supporting Councilwoman Cooper Sutton's inquiry to figure out what we can do better, so thank you all for what you do, and look forward to seeing you again. Harwood Center? I almost said Harwood Center, okay. You know, play, play a little basketball, you know, catch on a hardwood. Uh, name and address for the record, how much money, what's your request, talk me through it. And I'm gonna ask you a series of questions, and hopefully we address all the concerns of, of this body. I'll cut it on, slide it closer, and then end of this your counterpart.
That work?
Absolutely, perfect.
Um, Rachel Aletta, um, uh, our address is forty-seventy-five Park Avenue, we're on South Campus University in Memphis. And this is, I'm Delaney Peters, I'm the executive assistant at Harwood, same address.
Okay, cool, alright, what's your funding, funding request to fifty-nine-five?
Correct.
Walk us through, um, you know, how you use these fees and what particular program this would be supported.
Yep, so Harwood Center currently, it's been around since nineteen fifty-seven, it's a nonprofit. We, uh, serve children with special needs, particularly autism, and it's an intensive outpatient therapy clinic. So, most of the kids we serve are here around thirty hours a week at a minimum. Um, we de-pride ourselves on not turning kids away due to problem behavior. We have about forty kids right now between our two therapy programs. So, we have applied behavior analysis and speech, language pathology services. So, um, but we've expanded that, and so we are currently growing. And so, every employee at Harwood Center from the top down, including myself, are at a minimum of certified, if not and/or licensed. And so, with that comes a lot of training and professional fees to make sure that we maintain that clinical level of excellence for our children.
I know a lot about those type of fees.
Is that me?
So, two things, one, the city of Memphis has a program called I Am and Concluded, um, I think their program also seeks to serve, um, uh, young people with autism, so feel free to reach out to them, figure out ways to potentially partner. Uh, Memphis, uh, Memphis is own, not sure if you know who he is, Kia Shine, he has, has, uh, uh, child autism, he has a company called Autism, I will butcher name of his company. Autism Advocates, I think that's what the name of the company is, feel free to reach out to him, you know. Talk about autism, Kia Shine will fly in from Atlanta to show up, because it's really important to him. So, just opportunities, you know, partner with people who doing, who are in the same spaces, and I've talked at length about Habitat for Humanity, a lot of times, if there's no one else in that area, you take all the bump, but when there's people in the area, you know, business-to-business relationships, partnerships is the way you're able to scale up and, you know, really, uh, do good work as a cohesive unit, so. Um, thank you for the work you're doing, this is important, I think, you know, people with, you know, disabilities aren't served the way they should be served, and I think we gotta do a better job as a community to do this, so thank you for the work that you're doing. Any questions from this body?
Now, I gotta say, he, he said everybody, the one who will be glad to come from Atlanta, him and his wife.
Oh, yeah, they coming.
You know, one thing about autism, a lot of people did not understand with autism, is more children are born now with that, and it's been neglected.
And it's various levels.
Take a special person to work with these children, okay, and you have to start really young, and children with autism are some of the most brilliant children, okay? I have a son that has a little bit of autism. And when he was started school, everybody had issues, you don't have people that will spend time.
Yep.
Half the time, he, he had light, he just didn't wanna talk to certain people. He kinda checked them out from head to toe, and he knew who was bad and who was good, so I stay away, so I don't talk to you. But he went to Jeter, principal. All of us talking this, that, and the other, "Oh, you know, this child", that's why I say those are brilliant children, they keep everything in their head, okay? They may not express it to just certain people, but certain ones, they will express everything too, okay? And my son graduated with honors from Tennessee State University, okay? He takes care of all of my business, all my monies.
My money?
And I can ask him anything, and he said, "Give me just a minute, he'll pull it up in his head and he'll tell you all about it." Those are those type of children, they may not express it, you have to have somebody that's gonna care and be there, okay? But yeah, but he's my number person too, he keeps up with all my business with the funeral home.
I know.
Okay, he does. But it takes special people, and I just got to commend y'all, and y'all keep the work up, okay? But there's so much out there like Chair was saying, you know, and then make sure y'all go across the street because, hey, my son is, hey, ready, said the same thing we said over here about it, so hey, get them funds over there also, okay?
And, and, you know, the county, when you talk about autism, the county will be extremely glad to support what you all are doing. Go ahead, Councilwoman. Oh, Kia Shine, Kimpfo Kia Shine? We don't wanna talk about the lyrics, you know, you know his music, he from Memphis. Oh, Stunna Sh- okay, alright, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Earlier in the summer, I finished the Ready class, that's to learn how to be a developer, I just wanted the information. But we had to, the, the class was broken into groups, and we had to do a project, um, uh, housing, a development. And there was a lady in our group who has a child with autism. And so, she fought really hard for us to do this development that- And so she fought really hard for us to do this development that had some, um, support accommodations, nuances for people with autism. And anyway, we, she sold it to us. We supported her and there were four judges, two of the judges, it was a couple. And anyway, two, three of the judges had a personal connection with someone with autism. Needless to say, we did win and, um, I just wanted to share that. Thank you so much. I yield the floor.
So somebody just texted me Autism Advocates, 'cause someone's listening. Autism Advocates. Go ahead.
Fifteen second. Like I said, my son graduated with honors, everything else. And when he graduated, before he sent out all his things, he made sure that he sent his principal an invitation. Because you got these schools, teachers, principals, don't look at these children. But he made sure she was the first one to know. That's why I said, hey, they're brilliant children. You just have to spend that time. Thank you.
Alright, um, so seems like you have a lot of support from this body. Thank you for the work that you do. We need more people like you, more organizations like you all. Thank you all. Who's next? Help, Helps? Is it an S on it here? Helps? With S? Okay, Helps Foundation. What's up, Cabo? Cabo's the man, y'all. I know, we got some extreme people here. We got Reverend Doctor, Pastor, uh, Mr. Man with a Green Thumb, Marlon Foster in the building. Alright, um, name and address for the record. Green, gotta say it all over again. Helps Foundation, name and address for the record. Introduce your counterpart. Tell us what the funding request is and walk us through how the money's gonna be used. At some point, I'm gonna ask a lot of questions. Kinda get some of the issues out the way.
My name is Sharon Wiggins and I'm the president of Helps. And our mission is to, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Sally Pearson. I'm the act, I'm a volunteer and the acting secretary.
Pearson? Related to Lisa Pearson?
No.
Okay, Jackie Pearson? Justin Pearson? Keyshawn Pearson? I'm just, I'm teasing. Um, address?
Thirteen thirty-three Gaither Street, right around the corner from Stax Museum, off of Treeag Avenue.
About parts, not too far from Pastor Foster either.
But anyway, our mission is to create a healthier community.
What's the funding request?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. Alright, now tell us how the funds will be used.
Well, we're gonna use the funding to support the homeless and the people that have a mental illness. And we're trying to clean up the community. Cause we're right there on the corner. We started cleaning up, but we ran out of funding. In the past, we've been getting funding from Walmart, little small grants, but we ran out of money, so we couldn't keep it up. And we always wanna let the people know in the community that the funding is coming from Walmart or wherever we get it, from private donations. Because they don't get to see you all, but we wanna let them know that you all care and that you all hear them. That's why we tell them where the money is coming from. And we also wanna use it for stipend for the children in the community, cause we have a lot of children there that are in poverty-stricken areas. Because we have a lot of room in houses here. And what's so sad is that you have like five families living in one room. So we wanna be able to support and give back. We wanna be able to give the little children stipend when they come and do our gardening, when they help clean up and pick up paper. And to me, that's so important that they can learn how to clean up, pick up, budget, and how to, um, eat healthy. And we try to educate them on how to budget their money. Instead of going out to McDonald's where they get a few funds, we wanna teach them how to buy like a loaf of bread, peanut butter, and how to make the money last. And we get a lot of children that's coming up here that's begging, I hate to say that, but they're trying to feed their family.
Okay, I was trying to figure out, I was trying to place this right by, it's right there by the gas station, by parking.
We clean the area up, but the thing was trying to maintain it, cause no one wants to volunteer in that area for some reason.
Y'all not too far from Jim and Semella's. It's a restaurant on Burlington Street, not too far.
Oh, Seminella, or Semella?
Jim, yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's some good food in over there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know where all the eateries are. Talk about what I, that's why I work out so much, right? Eat way too much. Um, okay, um, any, any questions from the council members? There's a word I'm gonna use that I say at the end of executives, it's brevity.
I already know.
I listen to you when I need to. City Beautiful, what is it? Beautiful City, City Beautiful? Memphis City Beautiful. I think that would be a good connect. Have you heard of them?
Yes, we have. We, they, um-
Have y'all reached out to them?
We have, and we got a lot of, um, don't, well, what do we get things to clean up with?
So you did, so you did reach out to them?
Yeah, we got equipment from them to clean up the area.
Okay.
And if you would drive by there, you would see that we've been making progress.
Yes, yes.
But the thing is, is that the more we clean-
Okay, yeah, I, I know. Your mental illness, how are you dealing with that? I know, do you all have a program? I, I see you got poverty, homeless, mental illness, underserved community, lack of community involvement, and crime. We know all that's Memphis right now. And we're all trying to get that under control. But when you talk about mental illness, you know, that's a, that's a baby of mine. Do you have a program? Are you linked with an organization that you can lead when you run into mental illness? You can kinda, are you partnered with someone right now?
We do case management. And we, well, that's all we have right now. They're billing something right around the corner on Mclemore for the community, like a clinic. We don't really know that much about, but right now we try to get them in case management to get them on their meds, cause a lot of them are non-compliant. So we just try to show them love and try to show them that we care.
So I think, I think that's it from the council members. I'm gonna put the pastor on the spot. I think Pastor Foster would be a good, um, tool to help, to help you all. The gentleman right here, right around the corner from you all. He does a lot of work in that community, like live, work, worship, all of it.
Gardening, we really want-
Garden too, all of it, all of it. So please connect with the pastor.
Okay.
Please, please connect. I think, I think, you know, the way you build communities, relationships.
Right.
And if you don't know what someone else is doing, that's some of the issues we have in our city. There's so many organizations that's working in silos when the collective impact could be great.
That's what we need.
Connect with the pastor. Thank you for working. Thank you for passion for people. So thank you all so much. We getting the list. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Say your name twice, I almost, I almost made it to. I almost made it to Indomitable Women of Incarcerated Men, that was, look, I almost, I almost passed it. I called them too, but I will start without them. Cedric, Jenna said, you sound like Barry White, your voice carried, that's what she said, that's what she said. That's what she said, Cedric, alright, I'm done, yeah, I'm done, alright, um, Hope, Love and Grace. Name and address for the record, introduce whoever's speaking or up at the mic. Tell me what the funding request is, I'm gonna ask some questions about how the fund is gonna be used and hopefully we can get through the presentation.
Name of the organization is Hope, Love and Grace.
Is it Michael?
Yeah, Hope, Love and Grace located thirteen oh one Roy Oaks, three eight one one six, which is in Whitehaven. Where we also serve the zip code three eight one oh six.
Simon?
Yeah, so my name is Chris Liggins, I'm actually the CPA of the organization. This is Nicole How, she's the founder and CEO of the organization. We asking for fifteen thousand, the organizational budget is around one sixty-five. Uh, we're asking for fifteen thousand just to implement the program and to do some things with the nonprofit. I'm gonna let Ms. How talk about the program itself.
Yes, Hope, Love and Grace was founded in two thousand seventeen, we work with um behaviors with the youth at the schools. And behavior, emotional, we deal with conflict resolution. So in the schools, like when they get in trouble, they will come to us and we will work with them.
You saying the schools, what schools?
Well, we working at Hamilton High School and we affiliate with um Boys Girls Club as well.
Hamilton High School Boys and Girls Club, so I guess the fifteen thousand that you're asking for this body is to do what exactly?
To work with, uh, work with the children, feed them after school. And take them on field trips to teach them more than just South Memphis, cause a lot of them don't get out the area.
That is so true, um, how many young people do you touch?
This year, it's been two thou- not two thousand, sorry, two hundred.
Two hundred, wow, that's wild. What's your, your overall budget is fifty? How many people, I mean, it sounds like, seems like it's mostly volunteers?
Yeah, volunteer.
Yeah, the organization been self-funded up to this point, uh, they have not received any grants, it's self-funded, uh, been doing some fundraising too, but.
Have you talked to the schools at all?
Yes.
M S C S, shout out to M S C S?
Well, I tried, but haven't got no response.
Do me a favor, send me an email, um, tell me about your organization, remind me that I said to do this, cause I will not remember, I promise you that. Um, and I'll, I'll connect you with some of the school board commissioners as well, I think if you're doing work with the schools, you should be a part of.
I wanna reach, I wanna reach more than just one school.
Send me an email, we, we can, we can make that happen, collective impact.
Yes, cause people, a lot of volunteers, they fall off, you know, so we have to sometimes pay the volunteers. So they fall off and we wanna reach more than just one school.
Y'all both from Memphis?
Yes.
Cool, 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 alright, um, any, you know, I knew that was coming, I was looking for the councilwoman for the district, I, I felt it in my spirit.
My husband works at Hamilton, he's the, um, he does with the, he deals with the, the troubled children there. At Hamilton High School.
I graduated from Whitehaven High School.
He graduated from Whitehaven High School.
So Whitehaven, Hamilton, okay, okay, like, like to connect, you know, there are some people that's on this body who, who live in the Glenview area, so we, we very familiar with it.
Oh, okay, okay.
You used to live in Glenview, we'll claim you. I used to live over by Pastor Foster, so, I don't know if they claim me anymore, it depends, it depends on the day, but thank you for the work that you do, um, please send me an email. JB Period Smiley Junior Memphis C N I G O, and I can connect you with some of the school board commissioners, see how they can support your work that you do, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Who's next, uh, Indomitable Women of Incarcerated Men, talk to us. Hey, hey, good afternoon. It's your first time coming?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so my apologies for my behavior. D Berry. Relation to the, the famous D Berries in Memphis?
Have no idea, have no idea.
Y'all know the famous D Berries in Memphis?
My husband, from Denmark, Tennessee.
What, Denmark, Tennessee? Okay, I still think y'all related, I'm gonna claim y'all as a family, y'all cousins, alright. Alright, name and address for the record, um, tell us what the funding request is and talk through how you're gonna use the funds, at some point I'm gonna start asking some questions, hopefully answer all the questions.
Alright, I'm Dr. Crystal D Berry, a licensed clinical social worker.
Excuse me, I didn't put the proper respect, excuse me, Dr. D Berry.
Oh, I was like, what I said? Um, Dr. Crystal D Berry, licensed clinical social worker, um, the address is forty-nine eighty-four Hampshire Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one seven. Um, we are requesting fifteen thousand um for a youth coordinator. Currently, we are in the Hickory Hill Community Center, we've been there since twenty twenty-two. And we would like to expand our services to three other community centers.
Full timeout, shoot your shot, shoot your shot. Hickory Hill.
So right now Hickory Hill, others that have expressed interest is North Frazier, Orange Mountain and Whitehaven.
Hey, you doing a good job right now.
I saw it. Okay. I'm gonna tell them you told me to say that now, because the names I listed are the ones that called me already, they didn't call me. But I would definitely tell them you told me. I saw it, you're absolutely right.
So who did you talk to at Orange Mountain, Raymond?
Um, it was one of, so the youth coordinator, she spoke to someone there, and so they're the ones that just told me, um, who was ac- actually asking for us to be there. Uh, Ben Mitchum at North Frazier asked us to be out there, and I can't remember the contact for Whitehaven. But those are the ones that have expressed interest.
Alright, so tell me a little bit about, so youth coordinator, what does a youth coordinator do?
Uh-huh, yes, so they conduct the, the group therapy sessions for the youth after school, three thirty to five, um, it's normally just one day a week. Um, volunteer based, our babies show up every week looking for us on Wednesdays at the Hickory Hill Community Center, we feed them, provide them snacks. We've done entrepreneurship type programming with them, um, try, help, helping them to identify unhealthy peer pressure. Cause some peer pressure is good, um, as well as bullying is, and, and installing um leadership qualities in them as well.
So you all serve uh youth um who parents may have been incarcerated?
So with our icon group, even though it's indomitable children overcoming negativity, and our name is, we focus on incarceration, we're prevention and intervention. So we're doing both, so we're not turning you away if you don't have someone incarcerated, nine times out of ten. Everyone knows someone that's been incarcerated and all of us are impacted by incarceration in some way, shape, form or fashion.
How do you raise your money?
Oh, wow, um, Pastor Orr, one of the first people to help us with fun, uh, with our fundraising efforts. Uh, my husband owns a barber shop and trucking company, so his employees, the whole barber shop staff, we just recently received almost a half a million dollar grant. Thank you. We just also received a half a million dollar grant from the state, um, again, I am a, a clinical social worker, so mental health is my primary background. Um, and they're helping us to actually demolish and rebuild a house, um, in the Rosetta Anis- Anisdale Historical District, as well as they're providing program and support.
Alright, you won, you won, you ain't got, you won, alright, alright, we got you, nah, but you know, the reason, the reason I say that, you know, somewhat in jest. You know, Councilwoman Swearingen Washington lives in the Glenview area, I live in the Glenview area. Uh, Councilwoman Walker used to live in Glenview, a lot of us, you know, have deep ties to that particular area, seem like you're doing great work. Um, that's why Councilwoman Walker asked you, what, what community centers were you in, that's why Councilman Ford said go to uh River View. He said use his name, by the way, his name carries some weight around here, if you didn't know that.
I've looked you up.
She said, yeah, 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 so, um, just keep up the good work, um, your request is reasonable, I mean.
Thank you.
Next time. You hear what she said?
Ask for more.
Yeah, but I mean, kudos to you, um, shout out to your husband for being here, I love, I love seeing, you know, uh, supporting our, our significant others.
You said what?
Go across the street as well.
Go across the street?
Go across the street, so, kudos to you, um, you know, if you ever need some assistance, feel free to reach out to this body, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, what's, what's your name, sorry? Tori Dever, thank you for being here, bro, alright, thank you. Next, I Oda Community Schools, I know something about I Oda, I don't know why. Um, name and address for the record, uh, you know the routine, right? You know the routine?
No.
First new, real new? Okay, cool, alright, alright, I, I fix how I'm acting, so we got guests, so most everybody seen me do one of these before. Um, so, use the three minute presentation, we're running behind schedule, so what's gonna do is you're gonna flip straight to the funding slide. Tell us what the funding request is, how the funds will be used, I'm gonna ask a few questions during the process. Probably interrupt you, I apologize in ahead of time, just make sure we get all the questions asked that I know the body wants to hear. We're good, name, address for the record, introduce your counterpart, and the floor is yours.
Jessica Piggies.
Piggies.
Piggies, and Tiffany Shivers, address sixty-six seventy East Raines Road.
Okay, what's your funding request?
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars, alright, how do you gonna use the funds?
Um, to help support feeding students within our mentorship programs.
Help feeding students in the mentorship programs, tell me a little bit about your mentorship programs.
So mentorship with I Oda Community Schools is relatively new, um, we are being more intentional in understanding that we need to reach our students in a more intensified way. Academics doesn't always reach students, but having a, um, supportive adult that you can rely on usually does. And using food to be that unifier, we know that students, uh, sometimes will need an excuse or a reason to show up and participate in programming. And food usually is that unifier that does that.
I Oda Community Schools, what schools?
Formerly Green Dot, so that's why you knew it, uh, formerly Green Dot, um, Hillcrisp, uh, High School, Blood City High School, Waddell Middle and Kirby Middle.
Hmm, so one of my other stuff and grounds, alright, Southeast Memphis Hickory Hill, alright, okay, I got you, I got you, any questions from this body? So what type of mentorship programs, is it more school focused, um, big brother, big sister focused, like what is it?
So we are unique, we're using a multi-tiered mentorship, um, mentorship model. We are offering mentoring opportunities for each grade level, and that's peer mentoring, the one-to-one mentoring, um, group, team, all of that. So different things for each grade level.
Okay, any questions about this body? All hearts and minds are clear, Councilman Ford will tell you to go to the other side, have you asked him for some money yet?
No.
Their program is different from the Memphis City Council, Memphis City Council, listen, listen to, there's a very smart man over there, listen to him. And Ask for Junior, so, there's another guy over there named Air Ford, Junior.
Just a little bit, okay.
Just a little bit, um, ask for funding, so, yeah, so keep it up, keep up the good work, alright. And since y'all are new, I'm gonna tell you the secret to this, consistent contact, um, council members are part-time. Uh, we all have full-time jobs, I know if you wanna reach Councilman Ford, if you're not down, he's gonna be at the funeral home, I'm gonna be in my law office. Like, we're all gonna be, I'm sure Councilwoman White's gonna be at trial, and Cooper Sutton's gonna be everywhere, trust me, everywhere, so, um, consistently reach out, reach out to their staff. Email, call, and over the next three weeks, the council's gonna make this decision, then you'll hopefully get a letter saying, hey, you've been funded at this level. So that's how it works, thank you all.
Alright, thank you.
Who's next? The Chief Clarence L. Ash Junior Firefighter. Now that's a name, I was looking at, I was concerned, sorry. Oh, that's a big typo. I can read, I promise, look. Alright, so when we. Okay. Okay.
What is funny?
Now I know.
There you go.
Alright, what's the funding acts, um, name and address for the record, introduce your counterpart, the funding acts.
I'm Cynthia Cash, C N O, President of the Chief Clarence L. Cash Junior Firefighter Foundation, twelve five is what we're asking for.
Good afternoon, I'm Cassandra Strong-McVey, I serve as an advisor for the volunteers for the organization.
You said McVey?
Yes.
I would actually relate to somebody, but I, I'm no luck so far, so I'm not gonna answer.
So what we were, what we've done in the past, um, our organization started Ju- July of twenty twenty-two. Uh, my dad was the first African-American fire chief for Shelby County Fire Department. But we have, um, focused on homelessness, assisting the underserved and low income. For youth, elderly and families, enhancing the knowledge of fire safety to our youth and ensuring our low-income homes are equipped with working smoke detectors. Thus far, we have, um, given to five deserving seniors at Kirby High School, which was District Three. Um, we sent them to, um, to, for their prom, we sent them to Capital Grill. And then we actually, uh, had car service for them. Each year for the past three years, we did a homeless drive in the park next to Juvenile Court. Um, we've also did, we partnered with the Dennis Price Foundation and we did a backpack drive for Westwood High School. We also in Douglas High School, we sent, um, five students to Orlando for the Grab Bash. They were students that excelled in, um, grades, know disciplinary actions, and we sent them. Um, and none of them had actually ever been outside of the city before. We actually are gearing up for our, um, smoke detector drive on Saturday, this Saturday, and it is in the North Haven area. And we also are partnering with Juvenile Court on October the sixteenth to where we, I'm sorry, October the twenty-sixth. With Juvenile Court, where we're doing our candy-coated coat drive, where we're trying to collect five hundred coats. To where we can, um, have a safe place for them to celebrate Halloween, as well as give them a coat for the winter.
Question, do you, do y'all have a partnership with the fire department or the firefighters?
We don't necessarily have a partnership with them, no.
Any, uh.
They have partnered with us before, when we went to the four babies that were shot on the expressway, we did a day of happiness for them. And M P D, M C S, uh, also partnered with us and the fire department, as well as the sheriff department partnered with us.
I think the, s- send an email to the fire department and tell them I told you to come, I think they will be happy to partner with you going forward. There you go. I'm, I'm telling you, I think they're gonna be happy to partner with you all, cause I think the council's gonna tell them to partner with you.
Partner with you all.
There you go, so just say the council sent you, literally say the council sent you, and then if they have a problem, say Councilman, Chairman Smiley sent you, and then they probably won't have a problem. Uh, but thank you, keep, 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 keep focused. Councilman Ford, I know you.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, you make sure you give it to fire department, tell them too, I'm looking at your picture in Shelby County, you've been there once, don't go back over there too. Check this sitting in here with this picture, I can see.
It's got my dad's name on it, it's got my dad's name on it.
But you just said you're gonna be giving coats away, when?
Yes, on October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth. Is that when y'all celebrating y'all Halloween thing, cause a lot of people on the twenty-sixth, that's when they're doing.
Yeah, we're partnering with Juvenile Court, uh-huh. Our target is five hundred.
Okay, yeah, make sure, yeah, well, we can help you, but uh, you come down and see me at E H four Mojo River, okay?
Okay, I will, must have. No, I, I'm receiving all of it.
Please do that.
Okay.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
Who's next? They put Pastor Foster on the spot today, I just believe in people giving people resources. Council members, are we all familiar with Knowledge Quest, if we're not, I won't, I won't pass the foster to kinda walk us through there. Wait on, I know who Councilman Ford is, I know Councilwoman Walker is, Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, you familiar with Knowledge Quest? Councilwoman White, I know you are, cause uh, Pastor Ref White, all of them South Memphis. Councilwoman White, you good with Knowledge Quest? Councilwoman White? Okay, just making sure, so funding request, straight to funding request, cause I wasn't actually give a full presentation.
We're requesting a hundred thousand dollars toward a million dollar ass, where we have the other nine and trying to really close out for the green leaf organic market in Delhi. So we've, um, transitioned thirty formerly vacant blighted lots and four abandoned buildings to Memphis's first USDA certified organic operation. One building is collegiate dormitory, the other building is onsite processing, this will be the third, they wanna take an existing, uh, old vacant corner grocery store and make it. Yeah, you know, a real market.
How soon, how soon, um, will the renovation start?
So we're done with construction drawings, we've got the bearings, we're ready to start.
How much is it gonna cost you to, to build this building?
This building is going to be a million all total. And again, we have, we're right there, we have nine, so we got four fifty from local A C C Foundation. We got two hundred and fifty from the Tennessee Department of Agriculture, we have a two hundred from Kreske Foundation. So we wanna, you know, made an ass kinda close to the gap to try to really complete this project.
And how, 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 is this adjacent to your current property, or is it?
Yes, it's, it's right.
It's a corner?
Yes, right on the corner, right next to the, um, college dorm, that ten-unit former apartment community, so it's right at the corner of, uh, that's Lardale and Le Cleve.
I know where it is, alright, any, any questions about what he's gonna do with the money?
No, but I had a question.
Alright, go ahead.
Do you know, um, Pastor Ernest Trice?
Trice, name is not, what's, I know the church is.
He's, he's doing something with the church in Whitehaven, and they just got a million dollar grant to do some things with ag- agriculture and, yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna connect you all.
Yeah, please, please, yeah, love that.
Thank you.
Um, you know, reach out to everybody, um, pretty consistently over the next three weeks, and at some point, you'll get an email saying. Here's the, that grant allocation the councils decided to go with, well, thank you for your presentation, thank you for the work you're doing, the commission. Also, thank you for allowing me to put you on the spot and say, hey, you probably wanna connect Pastor Foster.
I'm gonna connect with them, that's my colleague Molly Buss, she's been to South Memphis, uh, educated now over our research and.
Where were you working at in South Memphis?
I worked at Memphis Delta Prep, and then I was at Knowledge Quest before I taught and after I.
I worked at Memphis Delta Prep, and then I was at Knowledge Quest before I taught and after I taught.
Oh, wow, I'm sorry. You gotta work with them all the time, no, that's good. It was a choice. All right, thank you for, um, choosing South Memphis, I appreciate it. Thank you, Pastor. What's next?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, come on, Cavo. Think are we off of the camera?
To the hot chair. It's more important to know mom.
All right, uh, name, address for the record, um, straight to the funding request, and then... I think we all familiar with what Latino Memphis does. Okay. Funding request, what are you gonna do with the money?
All right, good afternoon, council members. Mauricio Calvo, sixty-fourty-one, Mamoraya Road Extended, Suite Sixteen, and my colleague Francisco Lara. So we're here to address, uh, an important challenge. Despite the fact that the Latinx community is the fastest-growing segment of our community, employers are having a really hard time, uh, hiring Latinos and Latinas to do the kind of jobs that our city needs and our community needs to also get into those jobs. So to your point, uh, we have a program that was started in twenty-twenty-one called Senderos. It's a workforce development program as part of Latino Memphis, because there are some persistent challenges in this community, from language barrier, lack of confidence, uh, interpreters, right, all of these things. We know this is a community that is working hard. There's some technical things that we need to empower, to do to empower the community. So we're requesting twenty-four thousand dollars from you. This is part five percent of our, uh, workforce development project. Uh, it's, it's supported by some of national funders, some state funding. Chairman, uh, you talk a lot about collective impact. We are partnering with everybody from the Chamber to Hope Works to, uh, other organizations here in town. We're not trying to do this alone. We don't think this is the one solution, this is just part of the solution to get all Memphians into better jobs.
Twenty-four and some change, twenty-four thousand, three hundred. I concur, Councilman Ford. Um, any questions about this body? All right, well, thank you for your work. Call the council.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Over the next three weeks.
Thanks for your time.
Regardless, extremely happy, y'all.
Thank you.
I just want, she's not the happy when she comes, comes see us, to be fair. She don't be the happy when she come to work, to be fair. I know. All right. Last two. Not, not that we're in a rush. We got all day. Legacy of Legends. We done talked about somebody that you know pretty well multiple times today.
Oh, really?
He's saying good things, bad things. Nah, 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 nah. All right. Hold on, I have to take a picture and send it to somebody. Hold up, that was fun. All right, go ahead. Name, address for the record, um, straight to the funding request.
Okay. Uh, Tierra Caswell, twenty-two eighty-five Frazier Boulevard, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one two seven. And I have with me, um, Jasmine Tricocci, who is our manager of communications and advocacy. Three months ago. Yeah, about three, four months ago. So straight to the funding request, I guess I'll get there.
So I thought she was a volunteer.
She's not a volunteer.
Okay, excuse me, get me together, I know.
Uh, we are requesting... Uh, forty-five thousand for the Community Resilience Hub and three eight one two seven zip code. Uh, formerly, we still own Legacy Impact Community Resource Center, which is located at twenty-two eighty-five Frazier Boulevard. Uh, due to some unforeseen challenges, that is still under construction, but we continue programming with a few of our community partners. And so we have a contract right now with Seeing Success and Community and Schools, where we are implementing a community schools model. And that includes, um, providing groceries, clothes, uh, other essential resources that families need right there in the, including clinical, uh, right there in the school. Um, once the word got out that we were putting, uh, pretty much a grocery store and a pantry uh, and a Walmart inside of Memphis Business Academy and Westside Middle School, Community and Schools, and, uh, Seeing Success basically challenged us to open this opportunity up to the surrounding schools, which includes, uh, Denver Cornerstone, Delano, Trezeston High School, Westside Middle School, Libertas, and I know I'm missing a few other schools, but in their surrounding area. So this forty-five thousand allows us to expand our capacity from just, uh, Westside Middle School and M B A to all of those students. Currently, we are serving about twenty-five hundred students. This will allow us to serve well over six thousand students. And that is what this request is for.
So just relax. She didn't know who you were for a second. She, that's why she leaned back. Go on, say what you gotta say, Cooper Sutton.
Legacy of Legends C D C. Uh, approximately, it has expanded to about four thousand, forty-five hundred more students. And then with the eleven thousand dollars we're asking for, the training, uh, we've partnered with Peer Power, they're providing us with two interns. This will allow us to, uh, put about three more interns on staff. I cannot go across the street. So we need y'all. So as far as myself, I'm a former alum, but we do have a program there. Uh, our three V leader program is at, um, Memphis Business Academy, where we service about a hundred students directly with our mentoring program and mental health services. But we have opened it up due to some other funding to all of their students in their network.
Your mental health services, everybody has mental health services. What does your mental health services look like and who are you partnering with?
So our students, once they take the, um, ACEs assessment and the resilience assessment, which identifies where their challenges are, what they've been exposed to in their homes, we determine if they have four or more, or where their lives, if it's just one, if it's suicide, or whatever their case may be, they're partner, they distinguish as if they're partnered with Alliance Healthcare Services or with, um, the University of Tennessee. Our lower-level cases do go to the University of Tennessee, uh, Child Advocacy Center, and our higher cases with behavioral health and mental illness go to Alliance Healthcare. And we do have a direct, um, memorandum of understanding with both of those organizations.
You're not partnering with Parkwood, they have an excellent program.
I am not, but I will look into them.
But you'll look into that, and I'll get in touch with the director that's there. She and I are very good friends, yoga hot heat friends, and I will connect you with Parkwood, okay?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Jenna over here plotting on how to help y'all in a different way. Probably will call her, um...
Thank you. Thank you.
He been pacing the way, he been pacing the way.
Mister Chairman, good afternoon to you. Witness you great public servants taking care of business. I'm Bishop David Allen Hall, and, uh, I'm bishop in the Church of God in Christ. And I'm the executive director and founder of what is called Life Together. Um, we have done, we're a nonprofit that is over twenty-five years of age. We've done anti-gang, gun, drug, and violence, twelve-step drug program, sports programming for youth. And, uh, the program we're wanting to talk with you today is Final Escape. And, uh, it is a dealing with, uh, ex-offenders and job placement. Uh, Ms. Yvonne Williams, who is the director of the program, will make her presentation. We thank you all for having us here. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Bishop Paul. And let me just say thank you for allowing us to present on today. As Bishop Paul stated, the Final Escape Program, of course, is a mentoring transitional program designed to help ex-offenders to get out and stay out of prison. We, uh, had our grand opening in May of twenty-twenty-one, so we're fairly young. But one of the things that, uh, our mission is for the Final Escape Program is simply to help, to help those young men and women get out and stay out. That's our desire, that's our focus.
Y'all address recidivism?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, uh, one of our, one of our major, uh, uh, ultimate goal, of course, is to, uh, foster significant impact on recidivism by providing relevant services to those justice-involved individual. Uh, one of the things we do, we provide education and training. We provide, uh, a curriculum for the family support, uh, personnel. We provide employment opportunities and those kinds of things. We try to teach men about authentic manhood, what a man really is and what that looks like, in addition to those life skills and those kinds of things. We try to teach women about authentic love, because we found out that so many of our young women don't understand their purpose. They don't understand that they were put here for a purpose. And that's why they have many times misplaced focuses, misplaced judgments, and those kinds of things. And one of the things that I am real pleased...
Miss Williams, quick question for you. Um, how do you, how do you, how do you all reach out to, um, those individuals who are recently released? How do y'all find them getting in contact with them?
Okay, primarily what we're doing now, we do, uh, virtual classes as well as onsite classes. We work with the Shelby County Sheriff's Office, all right, to, to recruit, uh, those persons from jails, and also from the main jail at two oh one.
Okay. About how many people do you serve?
Okay, we serve, we've served since our inception, over twenty-seven hundred people, okay? We graduated two hundred.
How many you looking to serve within this physical year?
Within this physical year, we hoping to serve at least a thousand.
Okay. And, and, and what do you consider serve? Is it like one or two classes is the program, what people you just touch?
No, sir, we have, we try to have at least three classes per year. We do accept, uh, those persons from the jails, but also walk-in clients as well, referrals from churches, referrals from other agencies, those kinds of things. We, we, uh, uh, uh... And I want to just make mention of this, just to give you a little bit about demographic. Thirty percent of our clients are white, sixty percent are black, ten percent are Hispanic. Uh, seventy-two percent of our graduates are employed. Those are the, uh, female graduates. Eighty-six percent of the male graduates are employed. Uh, we also have wraparound services as well, where we provide clothes, closet, hygiene packages, emergency food packages, bus passes, those kinds of things to help them once they're released and once they go through our program. And then we also work with them for a full year to help them to get stable, to stabilize them, um, with their, with their pursuit and with their, uh, quest for success. Because we once believed, and it's our heart, was in our heart and what we truly believe, that when they truly understand their purpose, when they truly understand what it is to be a man, what it is to be, uh, a woman, their purpose, then they're gonna have a better opportunity to succeed. And we've had young men and young women to say to us that having gone through our program, they finally know what a man is. Having gone through our program, they finally know that they were not put in the earth to be abused, or as women. So those kinds of things are meaningful for us. When we can see that we're impacting them to the point where they wanna be better husbands, better sons, better daughters, those kinds of things, that's helping our community. And it's helping us because there's one less threat that we have to have.
So, so the funding request is a little bit over twenty-eight thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. Any, any questions from this body? I know we know the bishop pretty well. Councilman Ford said that's it. Uh, we, isn't it? I think you came at the right time. I think, it looked like the council didn't give a move.
I was with you all, uh, a couple of weeks. I was with you a couple of weeks ago, yeah. And you will see there is a new P S A that, uh... Oh, please, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes. All right, well, thank you all for being here, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, I say entertain emotion to a germ, but I don't even need it. Bye-bye, y'all. See y'all tomorrow. But if you're listening online, uh, we can reset some to you tomorrow.